Good afternoon. It's 2:30. I will call the regularly scheduled meeting of Salina City Commission to order. I would first ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. We will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here. With that, we will, those that are able, please stand for a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and my people, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no awards or proclamations. And before we get into the citizens forum, there was something that was brought to our attention earlier today. I'm going to turn the microphone over to City Manager Mike Skragg to just talk a little bit about the meeting time.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We, as you can tell by now, this meeting is starting at 2:30. And I haven't gone back and checked. I think we've done others at 2:30. But the question was recently raised about our rules of procedure in terms of calling a meeting at 2:30. And I have to admit, we went through the process of polling you as a commission to confirm whether 2:30 was acceptable to you in terms of a workable time. I personally was working from memory and knew that that was a requirement. But our rules of procedure do say that it provides for a 4 o'clock regular session, and it provides for special meetings with the consent of the mayor and two other commissioners. And so while we got everyone's consent, we didn't necessarily characterize this as a special meeting. In part, as you know, ever since COVID, we've not been meeting in 107B because of initially mass gathering limits and then social distancing requirements. So we kind of dispensed with study sessions in 107B and stopped meeting at 2:30, and our time has bounced around a little bit. So I'll take personal responsibility for any oversight in terms of not possibly characterizing this as a special meeting, per se, and I apologize for any confusion it might have created. Ironically, one of our biggest items on the agenda today is the budget. It could have easily been set up as a 2:30 study session in this room, and we could have covered budget and then rolled into a regular session. So going forward, we have plenty of budget to talk about for the foreseeable future, and they will be longer study session-related type items. So I think going forward, we can continue to characterize it as a 2:30 study session and a 4 o'clock regular session. But I apologize for any confusion or my oversight and any confusion it might have caused.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. I know I've read the resolution and just thought it allowed us also to change the time with the majority of the quorum approving that. So you're not the only one that maybe didn't quite read that correctly.
I guess I should add, too, that from a Kansas Open Meetings Act standpoint, required notice was sent. It's not an issue of open meetings. It's solely your own rules of procedure.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move into the citizens forum. This is a chance for individuals that would like to come before the commission and talk about something that is not on the agenda. You have five minutes to address the commission, and with that, we'll get started. Please state your name and address, if you would.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Joel Weimer. Again, I operate CNW Ranch in both Salina and Ottawa Counties. I'm also the chairman of the Salina-Saline County Law Enforcement Advisory Board. And I'm here to represent that board today. I thank you for hearing me again, second week in a row. I understand that there's been some discussion about changing the format of our board and having the commission, which I encouraged the commission last week, to please give us any input they had, so I could take that back to my board to present it to them, and we would discuss it. And I haven't heard anything from the commission. And we did have a meeting last week after the commission meeting. I guess there's only two points I'd like to make. Basically, one is that we are a very cohesive board, and we feel like we do the job that we've set out to do, and it's been enforced for 13 years. And it doesn't seem like there's, at this juncture, a real good reason to fix something that's not broken. So with that, I think what I'd like to do is introduce a couple of the other folks who are on the board with me. Ms. Millie Moy is here with us today. Robert Cunningham is in the back row, and he's going to read a statement for Vanessa Lopez Burns, who was unable to be with us today, but she sent a written statement. So the other point I'd like to make is I'm a little uncomfortable with just getting up here in front of the commission and making my statements and not having any type of a response or a give and take or discussion about it with the commission that might lead to something positive. So I'd like to encourage the commission to create a study session where we could have some interaction with the commission, if that's possible. With that, I'll ask Robert Cunningham to come up and address you. Thank you for hearing me out again.
Thank you, Joel. Hello, Mayor Hoppick, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Hodges, Commissioner Ryan, and Commissioner France. I'll be reading from Vanessa Lopez Burns, a statement from her and also from myself, but it should all be under five minutes. Vanessa says, "My name is Vanessa Lopez Burns. I've been a member of the Law Enforcement Advisory Board for a few years. It appealed to me that after learning that this board is made up of a group of community members that review complaints brought against our law enforcement, our function is not to tell law enforcement how to run their agencies, but it allows us to review that they are following protocol when it comes to these sensitive matters. We are provided with updates on their ongoing training and education as well. The agencies welcomes our input, and we have discussions on how to make the relationships between community members and law enforcement better. Members of the board represent different ethnic groups and race backgrounds of our community. It is our duty to be part of the checks and balances between law enforcement and community members. I am proud that our town created this board, and I feel it isn't necessary to make this city, make this, excuse me, a city-run or a commission-run board. Thank you for your time." And that is Vanessa Lopez Burns. Given what is going on in our world today, I, Robert Cunningham, my address is 132 West Prescott Avenue here in Salina, agreed to represent as a member of the Salina-Saline County Law Enforcement Advisory Board. I was at Casey's gas station on the corner of Ninth and Crawford yesterday. Just, this is not a fictional story. This is for real. And while there, I was greeted by a friendly smile from a young lady who just happened to be biracial. And I believe she's going to be a senior in high school this year. As some of you know, I work in the high schools on a pretty much daily basis. Before she went into the store, I asked her how her summer was going. She said a lot, she said, like what a lot of young people will say, she said, "Okay, I guess." She was so kind, because when she came back out to pump gas for her mother, she asked, "How was your summer, Mr. C?" And I replied, "Well, okay, I guess." And we just laughed. Our laughs were unfortunately disrupted, because the next thing that we hear coming from a vehicle heading north on Ninth Street is the fading sound of someone I looked at the young lady and asked her, did she hear that? And she said, yes. And unfortunately, I made the statement. That's what gets people shocked. I actually said that to all of my law enforcement friends. I had to immediately recap my statement, because, one, I'm not going to shoot anyone. It's not in my blood. And, two, I knew it was based on an immediate emotion and reaction. I then explained to her that my statement was not a correct response. Also told her that is why I don't say the N-word even to people of my own race, because if I can be angry at another person who is not my race saying it as a term of hatred, then there's no reason for me using it, the word, as a term of endearment, even to the people of my own color, although I do understand. Why do I tell this story? Is it to be another sprinkle in the sea of voices that are crying out about the systemic racism in our nation? Well, of course, but not only that. The other reason is that it highlights the purpose for the Law Enforcement Advisory Board, of which I am a current member and former president. Because of this explicit form of racist behavior that was meant to get a reaction that the young lady and I experienced, and that I've experienced in the past, is one of the reasons I feel privileged to serve on the board. The purpose of the Law Enforcement Advisory Board is to assist law enforcement in reviewing policy, educational training of officers, which means the board will review and recommend training that includes an understanding of historical, cultural systems that perpetuate racial profiling and assist in identifying racial profiling practices, and review and recommend other training topics assigned by the chief of police and/or the sheriff. In addition, the purpose of the board is for community outreach. Members reflect the racial and ethnic diversity of Salina and Saline County, and the willingness to work toward the elimination of racial profiling. Because of the experience of marginalized community members, it is important that people are in place to listen, to question, and make recommendations without being biased regarding complaints. It should give an individual comfort that they can come to community members who are neither elected or appointed, but have been recommended by previous board members based on their character, based upon their community involvement, and based upon their great relationship with law enforcement. We have all been recommended by previous board members who believe that our positions on the board would be a direct representation of the community at large. We have witnessed our law enforcement leaders explain how some officers maintained integrity in their engagement of community members, and how they could have better engaged with persons in our community. The established method of how the board members have been selected thus far has proven to be successful. In conclusion, I did spend about two minutes.
You're fine.
Okay. In conclusion, it is our belief that if it's not broken, as Mr. Cromwell said, let's not fix it. I believe that having less political involvement will resort in more community members being willing to volunteer and serve on the Law Enforcement Advisory Board. This established method of board selection will increase and promote trust from community members towards city and county law enforcement, and as well as the political community. I thank you, Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Hoppick, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Hodges, Commissioner Ryan, and Commissioner France for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate your words. And I know part of what we're hoping to do in the future is to educate ourselves on law enforcement and your board. So we look forward to having more discussions with you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to approach?
Good afternoon. Dr. Justin Hanky, 1322 Bentgrass Drive. I wanted to read a statement on behalf of the Grand Prairie residents regarding the replat of Phase III. Take this off real quick. "To the City Planning Commission, City Commission, and City Staff, the Grand Prairie residents are extremely concerned that the issues of special assessments has not been reported to the City Planning Commission by City Staff regarding the replat of Phase III. Special assessments for Phase I of Grand Prairie totaled $1,458,635.64 and addressed costs of streets, storm sewer, detention ponds, water improvements, and sanitary sewer system. The documents regarding method of assessment and apportionment of cost for the special assessment states, 'Each parcel in the improvement district shall be assessed equally per lot for cost of the various improvements benefiting such lot, as described in apportionment of cost below.' This means that the majority of special assessment costs were based on number of lots and not size of lots. Splitting the current special assessments of the 19 Phase III lots to 30 lots is not appropriate. This would effectively be stealing money from current residents to help pay for the Phase III replat that we object to. If the replat were to be approved, the special assessments from Phase I that affected Phase II and III should now be distributed between 81 lots instead of the original 70, and the costs that were based on ratio distribution would need to be adjusted as well. The special assessment bond was issued in 2010 and is a 15-year bond and will be paid up in 2024. We, the residents of Grand Prairie, find it questionable that this issue has not been addressed by City Staff, the developer, or the city attorney. Not addressing this issue would set a precedent for all developers in Salina to plat developments with a small number of large lots and later replat once a few residents have picked up the bulk of the special assessment costs. Mr. William Shepherd of Cornerstone Development stated clearly to Commissioner Hodges on January 6, 2020, at 5 hours and 34 minutes into the City Commission meeting, quote, "This all started with a replat and a rezone, and changed to a replat on something that was originally intended when we started this 12 years ago. If this was the original intention, which he has also reported at other previous planning and City Commission meetings, the special assessments should have been originally apportioned to the original intended number of lots. Not doing so has and will allow the developer to inappropriately take over $100,000 in special assessments from taxpaying residents of Grand Prairie. Below is the link to the City Commission meeting referenced. If the replat is ultimately approved, the residents of Grand Prairie plan to take legal recourse towards the developer and the city of Salina. Legal action against the city would be based on insufficiently providing information to the Planning Commission to make an informed decision pertaining to special assessment and drainage issues. We also have concerns that the current staff report submitted to the Planning Commission provides false and misleading information that was initially given by Mr. Dean Andrew. I have provided hard copies of our concerns to be submitted to public record, and I will be emailing the City Commission, Planning Commission, City Staff, and involved residents this information this evening regarding special assessment distribution and drainage concerns that the staff has not appropriately provided to the Planning Commission. We ask that the Planning Commission be informed of these issues prior to making a final decision on the replat. Separately, I have also provided a hard copy statement of our concerns regarding drainage issues. Briefly, Mr. Dean Andrew reported to the Planning Commission that there are detention facilities installed on Hole 12 that will detain and control the rate of stormwater drainage across the golf course for Phase III and the north end of Phase II. No detention facilities exist on Hole 12. And there are pictures of the areas he reported to the Planning Commission where detention areas existed in the packets that I provided. We have also provided the link to the Planning Commission meeting video and the time of the meeting where Dean Andrew provided this false information. Obviously, this is concerning to the residents, since he had previously misled the commission to believe that there was an emergency access road in place that never existed, causing him to recuse himself from the project. In addition, there are no easements for stormwater detention in the above-mentioned areas on Hole 12, nor are there any special assessments budgeted for detention areas development. Without detention facilities for stormwater drainage, this affects the engineering report regarding peak runoff sent to Mariposa Pond prepared by Dan Stack. The Mariposa HOA should be updated regarding these changes as well. The increased impermeable lot coverage of current conditions that was acknowledged at the last planning commission should also be taken into account in engineering studies provided, since we will exceed the agreed-upon amount of peak flow runoff that was to be accepted by Mariposa HOA and the Mariposa Pond due to the current building conditions and replat of Phase III. On behalf of Grand Prairie residents, thank you for your time. And thank you, guys, for all you're doing with the lockdown and coronavirus. It's a mess.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Just a question in regards to, not for you, Dr. Hanky, but for staff in regards to, is this information going to be presented to the Planning Commission? I assume Dr. Hanky is going to be sending it to the Planning Commission, but will this be a part of the materials that they review at the meeting tomorrow? Isn't it tomorrow?
Yes, it's tomorrow afternoon. So we'll have to take a look at it and see how to factor it in. The first question, I believe, that's going to the Planning Commission is whether they wish to reconsider. So at the point they make that decision, and if they choose to reconsider, then I think the intention is to re-listen to the deliberations that occurred at the prior meeting where we had technical difficulties, and then we'll have to take a look at this information and see if it merits us supplementing in some way what they're deliberating on.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have others that would like to approach the podium during Citizens Forum?
My name is Luke Stanford, and I'm from Salina. So first, I know we already addressed that we changed the meeting and maybe kind of the timing with that, but I want to ask, why did we change the meeting? Why did we move it from a time where at least some people can come to a time where really no one can come? So I just kind of want to ask that question, and you can answer whenever I'm done. But beyond that, I kind of want to introduce the group that I'm here with, all those people over here. And so we're calling ourselves the Sunflower Coalition. And what we're really trying to go for is demilitarization, reallocation of resources, and public accountability. And our motto is freedom, justice, and struggle. And so pretty much all the people here are going to give a speech about it, an individual part of it, and just kind of go into more detail about that. But what I'm going to talk about is the Public Accountability Board. I know that we already heard a very eloquent speech about it, but there's just some problems that we have with it and that we think should be voiced. And so first off is that it's not public. I mean, it meets at like 7:00 a.m. or something, and it's not open to the public. Nothing is said is open to the public either. It's pretty closed-doors meetings, and that's really not public accountability. And I get that there could be some reasons for that, but we need more transparency with that. And beyond that, they talked about how they appoint people. And they said it's not broken, but there's just a fundamental problem with that. You're using people who are already involved with law enforcement to appoint other people who be kind of policing the police. I think that it should be people who are elected, not to the board, but the elected officials. You should be deciding who's on there, not just a cycle of people repeating who's going to take over after them. And I think that we do need to commend the Salina PD on some of the great strengths it already has, and that it has been ahead of the curve on a lot of issues. But the world has changed so much in the last couple of months that being ahead of the issues a couple of months ago is being way behind them today. We need to keep being ahead of the curve, and we need to keep talking about these issues, and we need to keep making sure that we're transparent and that the public can feel safe with the police. And I'm going to let everyone else take over from here.
Excuse me. While you're switching speakers, I just wanted to follow up. I was going to do this under other business, but I forwarded some questions regarding the Law Enforcement Advisory Board and our racial and bias-based policing comprehensive plan. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to reiterate how important I think it is for, with transparency, in order to be able to communicate clearly what, who this board is, what they do, how you get on it, and what our policies are in terms of that. So hopefully, whenever I receive that, I'll definitely share it with anyone who's interested. But I do have the use-of-force policy, but the one I have is dated from 2016, and I don't know if there have been updates since then.
Can you also answer my question about the why the meeting was changed?
I can try to answer that one. Before COVID-19, we had study sessions at 2:30, and then we had regular sessions at 4:00. And so we were just kind of following, I'm not saying it's right. I understand the concern, but we're kind of melding together those two meeting times, because we knew today was a significantly long agenda. With respect to the other information, I do think one of the things that we may want to talk about when we get to the agenda item about the community forum is a way that we can provide an overview, answer a lot of these questions. I mean, we've been mindful not wanting to come off as defensive or try to get ahead of the issue and seem like we are trying to dismiss anything. But I think there are a lot of questions that are coming up that are probably study session material or may not even be able to be covered in one study session. But there's a lot of background information that I think we can objectively present for your consideration, the community's consideration. In part, that's why I tried to do the inventory of issues that we're seeing nationally as talking points, so that we then can try to speak to those if need be, rather than just kind of haphazardly throwing out some information. But we can talk about it further in Agenda Item Number 7.4, but I think there is merit to addressing some of these questions in that format.
Okay. Anyone else?
My name is Blaze Johnson, and I live here in Salina. Sorry for using my phone for notes. I just came from work. I want to challenge the role of police in Salina and just in everywhere. The majority of situations police are called to handle are outside the scope of what armed officers can or should be involved in. Police handle deeply rooted issues using violence and incarceration, and as an institution, do nothing to address our societal failures. Armed officers with only a few weeks of training are not appropriate or effective responders to homelessness, mental illness, or addiction. I've experienced a personal instance where the police were called on a person close to me about a matter of mental health. The intervention of police officers served only to escalate the fear and tension of the situation. My friend, who was already in a bad place, was sent further into a headspace of terror and trauma. And what else could possibly be expected when we wake up to two men with guns at the door of my house? Social workers must have at least a four-year degree and hands-on training. Suicide counselors and substance abuse counselors need at least a four-year degree in certifications. After only a few weeks of training, Salina police officers are given a gun and expected to handle any and all nuanced human situations. Cops with guns are not appropriate responders to check in on people's mental health. Cops with guns are not appropriate responders to simple battery, which describes acts like punching or shoving someone during an argument. Bringing a gun and little training into such a situation will only escalate it, especially if mental health or substances are also involved. Cops with guns are not the solution to drug abuse and addiction. Cops with guns are not the solution to homelessness. Violent crimes accounted for 10% of adult arrests made by Salina PD in 2018. This is according to the Kansas Bureau of Investigation, as well as 10% of index crimes reported by Salina PD in 2018. So this means that the majority of adult arrests were for things like drug offenses, theft, trespassing, which often affects homeless people, and simple battery. That means that 90% of crimes reported and adult arrests made were for crimes that are not violent. I'm asking you now, does that justify a $10 million police department? You probably already know this, but that is a quarter of the city's general fund budget. These funds would be vastly better used to provide affordable housing, mental health resources, substance abuse treatment, childcare, and education, all of which are preventative measures for things like drug-related arrests, theft, and trespassing. Even beyond that, they are all basic needs for the human existence. I was incredibly disappointed with some of Mr. Trent Davis's comments last week. You said, and I quote, "All we can do is set penalties for misbehaving." That is an extremely troubling statement to hear from the highest governing body in Salina that approves the city's budget this year, each year. You're even talking about the budget today. The reality is, we as a society set penalties for being poor, for being sick, for being desperate, because we choose to. Because right now, that's the limit of our imagination. You have the power to reallocate funds to address issues that no amount of policing can solve. After decades of mainstream conversations about police violence and systemic racism in every corner of our institutions, you cannot say this is an issue that has only now come to light. You cannot say this is an issue that doesn't affect Salina. It is great that you want to educate yourself, as Mr. France was talking about last week, but you should have been educating yourself a long time ago. Your attitudes towards change need to be nothing less than urgent and wholehearted, because you have real and tangible power over the city's priorities and resources. And in direct consequence, you have power over people's lives. Don't forget that.
Thank you.
My name is Eileen Escobedo, and I reside in Salina, Kansas. I first heard about the 10-33 program in my American Justice class at Salina South High. We started the unit off by watching a Last Week Tonight video titled Ferguson, Missouri and Police Militarization, hosted by John Oliver. and Police Militarization, hosted by John Oliver. I would say I recommend this video, however, it is not recommended. You must watch this video when you have the opportunity. The video, to my horde, describes the policing in the United States today militarized. Police departments across the nation are slowly morphing into militarized units because of the 1033 program. Thus, I am before you today, Commission members and mayor. I call for the end of militarization in our police force. For those who may not be aware, 1033 program provides an avenue for police departments across the nation to obtain surplus military equipment. There are few restrictions on what equipment is obtainable through this program, meaning police departments can virtually access all military equipment desired. The 1033 program was implemented by Congress in 1996 with the idea to equip officers against the war on drugs. An egregious campaign, we can all acknowledge, has been a massive failure. Since its initial implementation, the Defense Logistics Agency states, "There are around 8,200 federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies from 49 states and four U.S. territories participating in the program." In fact, David Wellner, NPR's National Security Correspondent, writes that "Since the implementation of 1033, the program has transferred over $7 billion worth of military surplus to local law enforcement agencies." To put $7 billion into perspective, the United States could end the Flint water crisis, help eradicate homelessness, and finally educate and feed the poor. The issue of militarization must be viewed through a state and local lens as well as federal. Kansas law enforcement agencies have purchased $4,697,805.17 worth of military equipment through the 1033 program. This large sum is made up from 729 purchases through the 1033 program from law enforcement agencies in Kansas. Purchases include 5.56 millimeter rifles, magazines, to mine-resistant vehicles, and combat-wheeled vehicles. But let us explore further into our own Salina, Kansas. We have a Salina SWAT team. Even though the ACLU report found only a small handful of SWAT deployments, 7% were for hostage, barricade, or active shooter scenarios. In fact, according to the report, more than 60% of deployments were to search for drugs or for serving warrants on individual residences. This is a nationwide study. Imagine how much smaller the numbers are here in Salina. But we must not stop there. Commission members and mayor, are you aware of the $200,000 purchase of a combat assault tactical vehicle on October 28, 2011?
I knew we had it.
I didn't know when we purchased it.
Okay. So why do we need such a militarized piece of equipment?
If I might ask a question, it was my understanding that under the 1033 program, it's a surplus program, it's not something we purchased. There might be a value assigned to it, and I'm not defending it. Okay, don't get me wrong, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly and that it was not a purchase, it was an acquisition of surplus hardware.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's valued at $200,000, which I didn't know, but we got it as a surplus item for some purpose.
Correct.
Okay.
So if a question of relevance to our own town is posed, we can clearly see militarization has already manifested itself in Salina. And this further poses the question as to why, even if it was purchased or not, why we even accepted such a high-grade piece of military equipment. Now, this is a major issue, as a study published in 2018 by Jonathan Momano, an assistant professor at Princeton University, would reveal. The study found that militarized policing is ineffective in decreasing crime and protecting police, and may actually weaken the public's image of the police. We are creating a police force that immediately interacts with citizens as if they were dangerous threats needing to be met with military equipment. Militarization of the police must come to an end as it is ineffective and more detrimental than good. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have others?
Hi, I'm Gavin Jones, I'm from Salina, Kansas, and I'm also here to just speak a little bit about the 1033 program and some other things. Eileen already covered a lot of the things, but I'm going to talk about some other stuff. So in evaluating the 1033 program in Salina, it's important to look at exactly what the Salina Police Department and the Saline County Sheriff's Department have received from the program. According to official data released from the Law Enforcement Support Office, which is the government agency responsible for the program, the SPD has received $257,809.18 in equipment, including a tactical wheeled vehicle, 16 5.56-millimeter rifles, one 7.62-millimeter rifle, and one grenade launcher. The Sheriff's Department has received $4,014 in equipment, including 35.56-millimeter rifles and three 7.63-millimeter rifles. These categories would include weapons such as M16s and M4 carbines and other military-grade rifles. Now, I know that the Saline County Sheriff's Department is not necessarily under the purview of the City Commission, but I think it's important to bring it up to just demonstrate the 1033 program in our county. And also, it is correct that the equipment from the 1033 program is requested and practically provided free of charge to police departments, other than things such as transportation fees to get the equipment here. But it's also important to understand that we really don't have that much oversight of exactly what we've received from the 1033 program and other military equipment that's necessarily purchased by the police department. This is because there's little to no civilian oversight of the program on the local level and little overall transparency. Under Executive Order 13688, from a federal executive order issued under the Obama administration, "Our requests for controlled items had to be approved by the civilian governing body in a community and the department requesting the items had to demonstrate having received training on civil rights, liberties, and the proper use of equipment." That executive order was issued by President Obama but has since been repealed by the Trump administration. Therefore, the police department, to my knowledge, now requires no civilian authorization in order to receive equipment from the 1033 program. It's also important to point out that the executive order specified several prohibited items as well, which included tracked armored vehicles, grenade launchers, and several other items. Furthermore, there is little information available on Salina's use of the 1033 program outside of the official government data. It's known that the police department has received these items, but we know little about what other military-style equipment the SPD has purchased using city funds or those from the Police Excellence Fund. We also are unsure on exactly how often this equipment is actually used in real situations and how often it has truly come in handy. We also need to look at how the 1033 program can contribute to the militarization of policing and lead to greater violence in communities, especially against the most vulnerable people. According to an article in the scientific journal Research and Politics, "1033 transfers have a positive relationship to fatalities from officer-involved shootings." This comes from data collected from four different states. And so it seems, also with available data, it seems likely that most of the 1033 program transfers to the SPD have been to support the department's SWAT unit. However, this also begs the question of how necessary the equipment truly is. According to the 2018 annual report of the Salina Police Department, the SPD SWAT team was called out for eight operations throughout the year, roughly one every 46 days. This is down, however, from 16 operations in 2016, and I believe there were around 17 or 18 in the year prior to that, in 2015. But the report also does not specify how often the SWAT team was actually confronted with violence or how military equipment was used in these deployments. This is why I think that it's important to urge the city of Salina to divest itself from further acquisition or use of the 1033 program to receive high-grade military equipment and to also establish greater transparency and oversight of police use and acquisition of military-grade equipment, and to work towards alternatives to the use of SPD and the SWAT team towards treatment of certain crimes in Salina, especially drug crimes. Thank you, that is all I have to say right now.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eddie Sherrymore and I live here in Salina. So I used to work in a food plant that made packaged items to sell to various stores around the country. To make sure that the food was safe, the company had a quality control department whose job it was to make sure proper protocols were being followed. Despite the company having an internal department dedicated to ensuring that food is being made safely, the USDA and the FDA still thought it necessary to send their own employees to audit our protocol and test the products. They were not the only ones. Other companies either sent their own auditors or required us to be audited by an independent third party. I think we can all agree that any company that is in the business of making food has a strong incentive to make safe food. Yet, at the same time, I think we can all agree that the same company also has an incentive to hide its mistakes and cut corners if it thinks it can get away with it. The police in America has been given a tremendous amount of power and trust. A police officer has the power to use non-lethal and lethal force if they deem it necessary to resolve a situation. A police officer has the power to arrest you and put you in jail. In fact, a police officer has the power to detain you if they have reasonable suspicion that you are involved in a crime, and they can use force to detain you if they deem it necessary. Note that you can be innocent, but if you refuse to be detained, they can legally use force to detain you. This example shows how much power has been given to the police over individual civilians. The people fund the police, the people give the police power, and are subject to the power the police have. Therefore, it is logical for us to demand a system where we can hold the police accountable. With so much power and trust put into our policing institution, the stakes are so high that we cannot afford to allow the police to solely manage their own quality control. The police cannot police themselves. Like the company I worked for, we need a third party with investigative and disciplinary powers to audit, oversee, and provide unbiased reviews of use of force. Internal policing is not enough because a look at history tells us it is possible for the police to become corrupt. For a recent example, read the 2015 findings of the DOJ on the Ferguson Police Department. Where was Internal Affairs? Were they the ones that caused the DOJ to get involved? No, the people of Ferguson did. They had to take to the streets for the investigation to happen. That should not be necessary. Now, some of you may be thinking about the Salina-Saline County Law Enforcement Advisory Board that was mentioned today. According to a pamphlet released on the Salina government, the Salina-Saline County Law Enforcement Advisory Board is composed of several, seven, local community members whose purpose is to assist the Salina County Sheriff's Office and the Salina Department in preempting and reviewing instances of racial profiling. Based on that, it looks like the only issue they care about is racial profiling. According to the 2020 bylaws under Article 3 entitled "Mission," there's a bullet point entitled "Policies Within the Police Department and/or Saline County Sheriff's Office." Under that title, it says, "The board will, quote, 'review slash develop slash recommend policies for law enforcement officers and the agency as it relates to the prohibition of racial profiling and other enforcement community-related issues assigned to the board by either the chief of police of Salina or the sheriff of Saline County." This offers much more clarity, but it looks like the board is only able to review issues that the police assigns to them. Everything I've read about the board indicates that they can only suggest, can only give suggestions and recommendations. What if the police choose to ignore these recommendations? What can the board do? It seems to me that the board has no power to effect change in the police unless the police want to change. This is not an effective way to hold the police accountable. For a board to hold the police accountable, it must have the power to at least look at any complaints filed. In case the police chief refuses to implement a recommendation, the board must be able to compel the chief to publicly say why he or she is refusing to implement the recommendation. The record of the board must also be made public. For a board to be effective at keeping the police accountable, it must be independent from the police, meaning it cannot have families of the police on it, and it should not have current or former members of the Police Excellence Fund board on it. Now, I want to be very clear, I am not attacking the character of that board member, I don't know him personally. But it seems to me that if you want people to trust that the Law Enforcement Advisory Board can keep the police accountable, you probably don't want one of your members to also be a member of a police fund that relies on private donations. And I'm also not attacking the police. What I'm doing is asking why we don't seem to have an effective way to hold accountable an institution that we've given power and money to. As it stands now, there is very little information available online on how the law enforcement board works. So here are some questions I'd like answered.
Eddie, about 30 seconds.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
When the Law Enforcement Advisory Board reviews an issue, does it write a report? What recommendation has the board made between 2007 and now? Did the chief of police act on these recommendations? Why or why not? It is possible all this information is somewhere and I was just looking in the wrong place. So please, if you know where it is, let me know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I assume you all know me by now, so I'm going to skip that. We came out here today--
But not everyone watching today saw you last week.
I'm Santiago Vazquez, I am a member of the Salina community. We came out here today to shine a spotlight on the deficiencies in our community, something everyone has the right to do, considering we live through those deficiencies every day. I sincerely hope you all gave your most profound attention to every single person who came out here to speak, because every single one of them has a life just as real and complex as yours, and they will be the first to see the effects of your power. Never forget that. Never forget that we aren't just statistics. We aren't just numbers on a page. It seems all too often sitting in that chair causes us to forget. Our community is not perfect. The more we look into it, the more we realize just how far from perfect we really are. We came out here today to speak, what we came out here to speak on today, the stunning inadequacy of our police review board, the misallocation of our city funds, the usage of the 1033 program, the very existence of the Excellence Fund is just a fraction of what our city needs to work on to deem itself passable. I want to know, did the City Commission already know about these issues? If not, why not? And if so, then why has nothing been done to address them? In either case, the perception becomes that our City Commission is not working for the benefit of our community, and much less our marginalized populations. As my friends pointed out in earlier speeches, we very clearly have a problem of accountability for the SPD. As we pointed out last week, our policies around the use of force, the few we read to you, are incredibly flawed. And considering those are the ones we chose to plaster online, I expect the rest of the policy doesn't fare much better. Our review board doesn't have the necessary power to enforce any changes, and it can't be safely said, and it can be safely said that it has failed its mission as a bridge between the community and the police, if that was ever even its true purpose. Considering it seemed almost no one knew of its existence until last week, even more alarming is that on this board, we have people working on fundraising for the police department, which is a jaw-dropping display of conflict of interest. And the fact that those people have the power to appoint the next generation of people on that board should be immediately concerning. On that note, it's important that we question why we even have private investments going into a public facility, and why those investments haven't been more open to the public eye. A look through the city budget tells us that $9 million of the $10 million the city gives to the police goes to just having personnel. But it seems we don't get the whole story since private funds aren't shown in the budget. We must wonder what more the police spend their money on and why they need a private fund in the first place. Of course, any doubts or suspicions would be easily cleared up with access to information. We request immediate access to records of how much money the Excellence Fund is raising and where it's going. We must also highlight the issue of police militarization. Last week, our usage of the 1033 program was brought to light, and the fact that the avenue is still open for our police department is a matter of extreme urgency. Why do we have a $720 grenade launcher, or a $200,000 armored vehicle, or the rest of the, in quotes, "at least $7,53,280" worth in military equipment we've bought using the 1033 program? In other communities, we've seen how increased militarization of the police has led to further violence and discrimination, specifically because of programs like 1033. This has to stop. It is disheartening, to say the very least, to see this level of carelessness in our city. It is with great pain that I have to come before you to present these issues, and it is with an even greater unimaginable pain that I come before you knowing that my parents right now are sitting at home worried about what might happen to me for bringing these issues to light, because they do not feel that we are safe in this community. I have spent my entire life around some of the most vulnerable populations in this city, and had to witness incredible injustice that they face at the hands of our police force. One instance that sticks out to me is how a member of our church was stopped for a minor traffic infraction. Her taillight was out, and somehow ended up cuffed and pinned down on the side of the road. I remember how my parents-- I remember how my parents made call after call to the department, asking if they had her in custody and every time we were told that she was not. And it was not until we physically went to find her that we were finally told that she had been taken in. Her case isn't unique either. There are countless testimonies of our police have violated their supposed duty to protect and serve. I guess they never specify. Protect and serve who? Choosing to ignore the very clear failures in our system is more than just ignorance. Frankly, it is abhorrent. It is a purposeful failure to live up to one's duty as a servant of the people. There is no room for that kind of misbehavior in our government and that is something that must be made very clear. We appreciate you making the attempt to listen to our community members and setting up a forum for the 29th, but one prevailing sentiment is that such an action should have been taken not just weeks ago, but years ago. The problem in policing, the problem in inequality on all levels are not new issues. People have been speaking out and protesting since before I was born, asking for the same things we're asking for now. Why has it taken our governing bodies so long to even start asking how we can reform? Why is it that only now, almost a month after George Floyd's death, we are just barely making an attempt to collect information from our people? Why would we even, would we even be having this forum? Would there be any attempts for reform? Would anything at all be happening if it weren't for the protests in Salina and our continued presence at these meetings? I'm afraid to know the answer. You asked for more information and we spent the time to find it and present it to you. We now expect you to spend the time to make change. At this point, we've been waiting too long. I now request the City Commission to make thorough statements on what they know about these issues since we're all already here.
This is an open forum. We're here to listen to you.
I would like to know what you know specifically about any of these issues and if you knew about them before any of us spoke on them.
We will be addressing things next week.
I would like to know what you know now, if, if you mind.
I'm sorry, your, your, your time is up.
Mayor Hopigai, I mean, if, if you would allow it, I'd be happy to speak to that. If not, I can talk with you afterwards about the things that I know and, and, and my concerns.
Norton Run Mantle, Salina, Kansas. We're at this point today, but what are we gonna do tomorrow? I hope this new training facility we're spending money on can be put to good use. And it isn't so much the young officers that are on the street, it's our supervisors. They're not providing these young men with the training. Some of your officers have got a set mind. If you're doing wrong and you get arrested, it's not the police's fault, it's your fault. Whose fault is it? There are innocent people out there that have been arrested. Why? We're gonna have to provide training for these officers. It's, it's not all the officers' fault, it's our supervisors. They're not providing the training for the young people. Retrain the old ones, too. So, as a law enforcement, are you prejudging profiling everybody that's on the street? He's guilty? Yes, you are. There are instances right here in Saline County. People are innocent. There were no charges filed against this person. There was no arrest warrant for him. There was no search warrant and yet he ended up getting arrested. We need to get rid of the bad apples and that includes some of them at the top. Here's the paper I showed two commissioners. These are quotes that they made four years ago from your supervisor in law enforcement. If that's the mentality they got, they need to go. Get somebody in there that'll train. We can't go back, but maybe we can go forward and find another way to do this. They're in too big of a hurry to arrest people. Gonna have to find another way to do this and there's a method out there to do it. It's been done for years. Don't be in such a hurry to arrest these people. Defuse this operation before you jump on them. We can train them, they can do it. Yeah, some people need to be arrested, but there are some people who don't. Gonna have to take a little more time. Don't be in such a rush to judgment. That's a quote from a law enforcement officer.
My apologies, I'm out in the waiting room, so it was hard to see if anybody else was getting up. My name is John Blanchard. I am a resident of Salina. I am also a former mayor and a former city commissioner. And to those people, the young people in particular, who are asking, "Why didn't we know about this?" Guilty. I had no idea that we had a law enforcement advisory board and I sat in the chair that you did. I can admit that. Why can't, when you're asked, why can you not admit that you did or didn't know? Did you know?
Yes.
You knew that we had a law enforcement advisory board?
Yes.
And you knew that they have conflicts of interest on that board and you did nothing about it?
I don't know about conflict of interest.
Okay, you have, you have a chairman who is both the chairman of the Law Enforcement Advisory Board and the chairman of the Excellence Fund. I think it's great that somebody wants to be on both of those boards, I just don't think it ought to be the same person. You can't be in oversight and on the booster club. I also understand, I, I also, excuse me, sir, I have, I have limited time. Could you hold my time, please, sir? Sir, can you please hold my?
Jill, just a second. Okay, go ahead.
Would you please hold my time so I can regather my thoughts? Excuse me, the document that the police department put out showed that the gentleman is on the Excellence Fund. It also came to my attention that you have a member of the bias board that also has a son-in-law that is a police officer. Now, when we talk about a police board being there to police bias, I think it's important that we identify those biases in the board members. Now, I'm a huge supporter of the police department. Every officer I know, I support, I support the chief. This isn't about the police department. In fact, greater transparency in this board and a greater public trust in this board makes the job safer for police officers because they can gain public trust. I'm very troubled that you guys don't know anything about this. Are you familiar that we have a racial profiling comprehensive plan? Mr. Mayor?
No.
Okay, are you aware, are you aware that?
We're here to listen to you, I'm not gonna answer questions. We're, we're gonna have, we're gonna be educating ourselves on all this, so I'm no different.
Well, I'll help educate you because as part of an annual report to the Kansas Attorney General's Office, the police department is required to report all instances of bias that have been reported and, and the outcomes of those, the results of those, they also ask, answer questions as to whether they have an advisory board established and whether or not they have a comprehensive plan for racial profiling. I think a good place to start, because I've asked, if I could see that thing, and I can't find it anywhere, I have no idea where this comprehensive plan is, either do you, apparently. I think that's a big problem that these young folks are asking you about. It's just about transparency. COMA has a rule that says any administrative body, ad hoc committee, anything set up that has public funding tied to it is required to follow the Open Meetings Act. I won't go into asking the attorney because I don't wanna go there, but I could find nowhere where this board was set up by resolution of the City Commission or has any oversight whatsoever. I'm just concerned about that. I, I wanna read you something and this is more for my, my friends that are on the police force more than anything. It's called "They Came First." They came first for the communists and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a communist. Then they came for the Jews and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a Jew. Then they came for the trade unionist and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a trade unionist. Then they came for the Catholics and I didn't speak up because I was Protestant. Then they came for me. And by that time, no one was left to speak up. We have to speak up when other people are speaking up. We put a lot of lip service to the fact that we wanna attract the young people to Salina. Well, listen, this is a generation of young people and they may not be the young people that you wanna attract to Salina, but they're the ones that I wanna attract to Salina. They're smart, they speak their minds, and it's the kinda thing that I really respect in people. One thing that I don't respect in people, when Mr., when the two gentlemen for the advisory board were up here, you were all smiles and you thanked them by their first names when they walked away from here. You failed to say thank you by name to one single one of these young people. That is a very subtle sign of disrespect. I would hope that you go back and watch that video and I would hope that the next time you have young people come up here and they ask you for things, answer them. You didn't have a problem answering me, but you wouldn't answer them.
Do we have anyone else? Okay, if not, we will move into the consent agenda.
Just one statement, Robert Cunningham. I was on the Law Enforcement Advisory Board before a family member of mine even became a police officer here, so I just want that to be on the record.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Cunningham, is, do you have a member, a family member who's a law enforcement officer?
I do, I do. I do have a family member that is a law enforcement officer, which is another reason and a motivation for why it is highly important for me to be on this board for the citizens who are facing any type of racial profiling because he is directly affected by that. The community members are directly affected by that, so absolutely. Thank you for the question.
We're not gonna get into point-counterpoint, I'm sorry.
I just clarified, sir.
We'll take care of that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cunningham, you're in public here, man.
Okay. Okay. We will be putting out notification about next week's meeting. I know there's been a lot of allegations made. I think we admit that our police force isn't perfect. I think we have a lot of good officers. We have, to learn more about the training, the education that goes on, we do ask those ladies and gentlemen that go to put on the blue every day to, to do a lot of different things. I think that was brought out. Policing's just part of it and we need to find a way to support them. I think we have a good police force and we only hope to make it better. So, thank you. With that, we will move into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of the June 15, 2020.
Okay, only thing we have on the consent agenda is the minutes from June 15.
Mayor, I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, we got a motion, second, approve the minutes from June 15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. That will lead us into administration.
Item 7.1, resolution number 20-7837, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Travelers Property and Casualty Company of America, the Travelers Indemnity Company for the renewal of the city's comprehensive property casualty insurance program and with the Lloyds of London for the property deductible buy-down option.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to present resolution number 207837, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Travelers Property and Casualty Company of America and the Travelers Indemnity Company for the renewal of the city's comprehensive property casualty insurance program and with Lloyds of London for a property deductible buy-down option. As you all know, the city purchases property and casualty insurance to cover multiple exposures like our buildings, our equipment, law enforcement liability and crime. You can find that full list of lines of coverage provided in the attached summary of insurance that was provided with the report that I gave you. Earlier this year, we began work with the city's broker, Assurance Partners, and with our insurance consultant, Charlesworth Consulting, and we evaluated the insurance market and the available insurance carrier options. This is something that we do every year. So since property and casualty insurance carriers almost exclusively utilize the agency broker system to market and sell their policies, the city uses Assurance Partners as our intermediary. And we look at Charlesworth Consulting as a contractual extension of city staff and they offer a wide range of resources. One of the most valuable services that Charlesworth offers the city is acting as an advisor during the renewal process. Assurance Partners and Charlesworth Consulting are compensated through a broker fee agreement and consulting services agreement, respectively. I'd like to point out that the city's annual property and casualty insurance policies are due to expire at the end of this month. So we received early indications from our current insurance company, Travelers, that they intended to make significant changes to our property deductible at renewal. They plan to increase the city's current $50,000 wind and hail deductible to 3% of value per building and business personal property, subject to a $250,000 minimum. This is well outside the city's risk retention tolerance and even though there are a limited number of carriers in the marketplace able to provide coverage for a city our size, we chose to go out to the market and solicit competitive proposals for a second consecutive year. On behalf of the city, Assurance Partners requested proposals from eight carriers and three chose to provide proposals for all lines of coverage and that was Travelers, One Beacon, and Brit. Chubb provided a proposal for property and in-linmarine only and Lloyds of London provided a proposal for levy liability coverage and a deductible buy-down options only. Midwest Public Risk and Swiss Re did not respond to the request for quotes and GLAP Filter declined due to the city's landfill exposure. Chubb offered a significantly high wind and hail deductible structure and One Beacon was going to exclude liability coverage for our levy. On page two of this report, you'll find the premium summary comparison of the expiring year's premium by line of coverage and how it compares to the 2020 Travelers and Brit proposals. We chose to compare only to Brit because their coverage terms were comparable to our expiring term with Travelers and both Travelers and Brit presented very similar pricing. And as you can see when comparing their detailed proposals, Travelers modified their proposal to offer the same wind and hail deductible of 1% of value per building and business personal property with a $50,000 minimum that Brit proposed. Travelers actually modified their original proposal in response to the competitive bidding process and through some pretty tough negotiations with Assurance Partners. The difference between the Travelers expiring premium and the Brit and Travelers 2020 proposed premiums is an overall increase of 1%, which equates to $4,406 with Travelers and $4,108 with Brit. Brit's proposal is actually just $298 less than Travelers. And that being said, Staff, Charlesworth and Assurance Partners don't believe that the minimal price difference warrants changing carriers at this time. We're pleased with the outcome, especially after Travelers had originally indicated an overall 10% premium increase and that significantly high wind and hail deductible that I just spoke about. Obviously, coverage, condition, and cost are important, but services are as well. We've been doing business with Travelers for 19 years and we've been pleased with their exceptional claims management and take advantage of their comprehensive online resources and partnerships that they share with their clients. So even though the overall renewal is much better than expected, the wind and hail deductible of 1% of value per building and business personal property is still a concern. We're able to go back and look at the last 19 years and found that the city had processed only three wind and hail claims with Travelers. One claim happened in 2006, the second in 2008, and the last one in 2011. The 2006 claim, there were five buildings that were damaged, the city paid $5,000 in deductible expense, Travelers paid just under $183,000 in damages, and if the claim would occur after June 30th of this year, the cost to the city would be $188,069. In 2008, nine buildings were damaged, the city paid $10,000 in deductible expense, Travelers paid just over $76,000 in damages, and if the claim would occur after June 30th, the cost to the city would be $408,056. In 2011, we had three buildings that were damaged, the city paid $10,000 in deductible expense, and Travelers paid just under $105,000 in damages. If the claim would occur after June 30th of this year, the cost to the city would be $50,000. If the claim would occur after June 30 of this year, the cost to the city would be $50,000, and that's because the buildings impacted during that claim were actually lower valued buildings, so the minimum of the $50,000 deductible would be assessed. In that situation, I just wouldn't have turned in the claim, because those specific buildings, the damages were less than $13,000. So overall, in 19 years, the city has had $363,226 in wind and hail property damage that was paid by Travelers, and the city paid $25,000 in deductible expenses. But due to the current budget constraints, the city's tolerance for risk and our ability to fund a large deductible is definitely a concern. So since we have several high-valued properties, Assurance Partners acquired four options to buy down the deductible $200,000. And think of the deductible buy-down as a layering of insurance with an effort to reduce the potential deductible expenses. The cost would be in addition to the package total, and is reflected in the model on the next page. I'll provide a pretty quick review of the deductible buy-down options, and if you believe that there's more review necessary at the end of my presentation, we can bring up James Charlesworth, who I drug here from Kansas City area, to be here to answer any questions. That one specifically, he's prepared to talk about. So the four options on page four, top of page four, A through D, would buy down our deductible to $100,000, but it would be for wind and hail damage only. We would still have our $25,000 other peril deductible. So, going across from left to right, if all city-owned properties were covered under option A, we'd have an additional premium of $146,000. And as you can tell, I couldn't provide any cost of events with or without the deductible option or any savings, because we don't know what buildings would have been affected. So that's blank for that purpose. So the next option, option B, would cover our nine highest-valued properties, and those are all listed: Tony's Pizza Event Center, Smoke Hill Museum, the Police Administration Building, Field House, Kenwood Cove, Community Theater, Fire Station 1, Fire Station 3, and Central Garage and Sanitation Building. If we were to purchase the $100,000 buy-down deductible, that additional premium would be $69,667,000. If we didn't purchase that deductible, and if all of those facilities were affected during a wind and hail storm, the cost of the event for the city would be $712,341. If we purchased the buy-down option, it would be $169,667, which is the savings of $542,674. So option three is for six facilities, and those were looked at because they were kind of in a concentrated area of downtown. So that's the museum, the police admin building, Field House, Community Theater, Central Garage and Sanitation Building, and then because of their value. So that would be an additional premium of $36,788 if we bought the buy-down option. If we didn't purchase the option, our loss total would be $357,128. If we purchased the option, our new loss would be $136,788, with the savings of $220,340. So the last option, option D, is Tony's Pizza Event Center and Kenwood Cove, those two facilities. If we purchased that buy-down option, the additional premium would be $30,245. Without the optional buy-down deductible, the cost could be $328,41. If we bought the option, it would be $130,245, with a savings of $197,796. So under option B specifically, the premium of just under $70,000 essentially, just to essentially reduce that risk to $100,000, is actually reasonable, but based on the city's favorable loss history, it might not be justified. We just don't know. Unfortunately, when it comes to weather events, the past is not a reliable predictor of the future. Again, if you have any questions regarding the deductible buy-down option, we can bring James up, and he can add to that information. So, the next table that I want to explain is the optional quotes table. All but the crime quote, I've already discussed elsewhere in my report. So the crime quote, crime quote is to increase the limits across the board to half a million dollars, but since the premium would be more than double, we plan to reject that quote. So the next section that you'll find on page five is a table reflecting the financial information. In 2020, in the insurance and bonds line item, we budgeted $512,106. We've spent $20,000 so far, and we have a remaining amount of $492,106. If you approved the Travelers' base proposal of $443,921, and the Lloyds of London buy-down deductible option B for $69,667 in premium, we'd be over budget by $21,482. At the end of the year, we would just need to evaluate whether a budget amendment would be necessary. So in closing, staff has identified the following options for the city commission's consideration. Option one, approve resolution number 207837, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Travelers Property and Casualty Company of America and the Travelers Indemnity Company for the renewal of the city's comprehensive property casualty insurance program, and an agreement with Lloyds of London for $100,000 buy-down property deductible covering the nine highest-valued buildings. Option two would be to approve resolution number 207837 with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate. Option three is to postpone consideration of resolution number 207837 to a specified date and time, and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments that you would like to request for further consideration. And option four would be to vote to deny resolution 207837, resulting in no property casualty insurance protection for potential losses. And staff recommends approving option one. So I am available for questions, as is, as I said earlier, James Charlesworth with Charlesworth Consulting out of the Kansas City area, and Mark Skidmore is the president of Assurance Partners, our broker, and he is here as well.
The city county building and this complex, is that covered under the building authorities and our budget?
Yeah, it's under the building authorities policy. The only thing that the city covers or that Travelers covers currently is business personal property, because we don't, because we don't own the facility.
And the new police training center is not mentioned here?
We will fully own the police training center when that's turned over from the contractor that's, you know, it's under construction now, so they cover that now. But once we take ownership of that, it'll be covered under the city's policy.
Under that recommendation of option B?
I think the question is, would it be included in the buy-down of the deductible?
Not currently.
Okay.
Unless we chose option A.
Okay.
Option A covers all of our facilities for an additional $146,000 in premium.
Just, I was going to ask the same question. I'm assuming that's going to be one of our 10 highest-value buildings?
And I think we could probably negotiate potentially to, I don't know if you can change that at this point?
It would be an increase.
It would, yeah, it would obviously increase the premium to add that, but we could. And I can't remember, remind me the value of the police training center? The total value, was it $6 million? Just under $6?
So, is that building, when it's completed, will it be covered under this policy at this rate, notwithstanding the buy-down of the deductible, but the base coverage is?
Yes, yes.
It would, it would come, it would be included in this?
We have a blanket policy that includes all our facilities.
Okay, so it would not be an add-on at the time that we occupy it? Okay.
And I don't know if they would adjust the premium at that moment, if Travelers would do that at that moment, or if they would wait for the next renewal?
It'd probably be.
Okay. So, paraded.
Because that is going to occur fairly soon.
Yes, next month.
Right.
And I will tell you that we added the Field House, when the year we added the Field House, it was kind of about the same time, and I don't, I wish I could remember the number. It was not a huge increase in dollars of premium. I can't speak to what that exact amount was, but it wasn't a large amount.
So the crime coverage, you'd ask for the quote to take it to 500,000. I didn't see where you told us what the existing level was.
$250,000, and it's on that summary?
So that doubled? Okay.
Mm-hmm. Some of them are set at 500,000 already, but the others, like employee dishonesty, $250,000.
Okay, I just missed it.
Forgery, alteration, money security, so.
One thing I guess, looked at it a third time and it finally hit me, does the city actually own the Community Theater building?
We own, we don't own it. It's owned by the Community Theater, but per contract, per contractual relationship, we're required to insure it, just the structure. So they carry their own liability insurance for the facility, for inside the facility. And there's a portion of the parking lot, it's a little convoluted and confusing, but there's a portion of the parking lot we cover as well.
By contract, we also provide janitorial services and building maintenance.
That part I remembered, I just, just any reason that that was included?
I think at the time, if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, because we have a blanket policy, it's so much easier for us to add that structure, because we do have a financial interest in it. So we, because of that, we're allowed to insure it legally, but because we have that blanket policy, we get such better rates than the Community Theater would if they went out and bought their own coverage. Same thing with the Arts Center, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we also pay for their property insurance as well. Same, same reason. If they go out and try to purchase their own property insurance, they're going to pay a lot more money, and it's also because we have a financial interest that allows us through, through contract to, to go ahead and purchase that.
They don't reimburse us for any?
No, they pay for it upfront, and then we actually reimburse them, but yeah. Yeah.
And I don't know whether this would be a question for you or Mr. Charlesworth, but if we were gambling people and guessed right, and there was no hail damage or wind damage for the next five years, is it cheaper or more expensive just to bankroll $120,000 a year in our own account? As long as you don't have damage two years in a row, in which case we'd be in trouble.
Well, I broke my crystal ball on the way to work the other day when I talked with Mike, and because I don't have that, unfortunately, I would love to tell you that we wouldn't have anything, but that's the thing, that's kind of why I'm, I chose option B just for multiple reasons, because it had our nine highest facilities that were part of it. Wind and hail is probably going to be most likely the most significant expense that we would experience. A storm event like that would probably be the most expensive loss that we would have to those structures. So it just kind of made sense when we all sat around and talked about it to choose that option over the others, but again, at the end of the day, we could, we could end up paying just under $70,000 every year for the next five, for the next 10 years, and not have a claim, because as you see, in 19 years, we had three claims. And we had other claims under other hail damage claims, but they were to autos, they were completely different policies. So we had lots of auto claims over the years.
Are we more likely to get a claim on a newer building or an older building?
It's dependent on the hail.
Yeah, they kind of, hailstorms, as they kind of move through, they, they kind of choose a specific area of town, they kind of follow like a pattern or a path, you can kind of see where they kind of went, where they started, where they finished, but it could be a different part of town at any time, so I just, we just don't know.
Yeah, I did a little mental math of the numbers that were shared in the report, if we, if we had, that event occurred after June and we didn't have the buy-down, and if my math is right, it's about $640,000, but that's over a, well, five-year period? Looks like a five-year span within that broader 19-year history.
And just looking at the data, and this is my question, it's, in 20 years, we've had $650,000 in claims. That would have been what we would have paid with, if the policy had been structured the way it's proposed to be structured, is based on the information you've got there. In that 20 years, if we insured all of the buildings with the, with the buy-down, we'd pay out just a little over $2.8 million in premiums for getting back $650,000 in claims, and even at the $70,000 level, it's a payout of about $1.4 million in premiums. So, and, and as you say, it's, that's why they call it risk. You know, it's possible that we could have all three of those sets of claims in two consecutive years. I mean, we get hail here sometimes. And so it becomes a matter of judgment, I guess, as to how we want to handle that. Personally, I'm uncomfortable with the buy-down. I just think that long-term, you know, over the next 50 years, doing that is a, is a loss leader for us, but.
Do we anticipate that this is something we're going to have to look at going forward? Is it the buy-down?
If you don't want to be subjected to the higher, yeah, the 1% currently, I mean, like I said in the beginning, Travelers--
Has that been standard in the marketplace now? I guess is a question that's becoming--
James can answer a little bit more than that, because he has, and Mark too, both, actually, because they have other clients that they're dealing with, and so they're seeing more than just the city of Salina renewal. Did you guys want to come speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor. James Charlesworth, Charlesworth Consulting, 1828 Walnut, Kansas City, Missouri. To your point, first to Commissioner Franz's point, if there's anybody that likes giving money to insurance companies more than me, I'd like to meet them, because I don't like buying insurance. I like saving money, I like building a risk management reserve fund and controlling our own destiny. However, your tolerance for risk and the ability to fund risk is really what the issue is that we're working with here. If the future is a predictor, or the past is a predictor of the future, you're spot on. I mean, it'd be better to save the money. But, but the market right now is kind of in a tailspin. It used to be that we could get low deductibles, very low premiums, because of a variety of reasons, that stayed for a long, long time. Whether this will happen, what will eventually happen is the market will correct itself, competition will take hold, insurance companies will start trying to beat up on each other, and it'll drive deductibles back down. So I don't know if these buy-downs are going to be necessary, these high deductibles are going to be in five years. I do think that it's probably going to get worse before it gets better, and Mark may disagree, but it's, if, when we start a renewal project for any of my clients, I always tell them, plan on 8% to 12% premium increase and an increase in your property deductible. That's kind of the standard. So the fact that we got the premium, that Mark and his team got the premium flat, was a real win. The real question is, what is your tolerance for risk? And, and when we had the conversation, we spent a lot of time just kind of working through it, and we landed on that $70,000 program, just for the mere reason of just the Tony's Pizza Center. That's $210,000 deductible if just that one building gets hit. And that's a big location with a big roof. So that's kind of where we landed. It's not necessarily the perfect decision, the perfect recommendation, but, but there's a lot of factors that go into it.
Did Brit give us a quote for a buy-down? Did we get one from them?
It would be the same, Lloyds of London. It's a whole separate policy, so it would, it could be applied to either the Brit program or the Travelers program.
Okay.
That's correct, didn't it, Mark?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And Brit's a good company. There's nothing wrong with that program at all, but your relationship with Travelers is important. Over time, it really plays into it, and to change for $4,000 would be not something I would ever recommend.
One question, probably not directly for you, but do we budget anywhere for a deductible of $300,000 or $400,000?
We, not for that amount, I'm sorry, I started to answer the question before I heard all of it. No, we don't, we don't budget for that amount. We do budget for kind of a risk management expense, whether that's totaling a police car or a dump truck getting blown off the road, and it's equally unpredictable, but no, we don't set aside this amount annually just in case.
So that would just be a general, would you have to just rob Peter to pay Paul or go into reserves?
Or take it out of reserve, one of the two.
And I think this question is for staff, either Ms. Schessler or Mr. Scragg. If we were to go ahead and do all city-owned properties, that would put us about $100,000 over budget? Is my--
$120,000, because I think that, that buy-down option is $146,000, we would be over $21,000 if we went with option B.
It'd be $80,000, roughly $80,000 more if you did the full. So, yeah, didn't make it $100,000?
$100,000?
Yeah.
Roughly.
I hate bringing this to you, I'm so sorry. I'm just going to say it. I'm just so excited that it was this good, because it did not start off this way. Kudos go to James and Mark, and I think the phone conversations that they had with people were very bold and, you know, it's a long time to be with one company and, you know, not be a problem child. I mean, we've been a very good risk for Travelers, and they've been a very good company to us in return, so I don't want to say it's been one-sided. They offer a lot of value, but, yeah, it did not look this way when we started.
So I think the exact number is $97,815, to answer your question. And then, not to take the conversation in a different direction, but I do think, given the market, you know, we've been able to renew without going to the market for a while, and now this is two years in a row where we've gone to the market, and I think we're going to have to probably demonstrate our willingness to continue to do that to get the best price we can.
And I think both James and Mark can speak to that, too. If we start becoming known as the entity that goes to the market all the time, that also brings with its own negatives. I mean, a lot of times, people just quit quoting us, because that's actually kind of, we had a little bit of issue over the years, because we had been with Travelers for so long.
Nobody wants to bid it.
Nobody wanted to bid it, because, oh, they're not going to leave. They're never going to leave. Well, we almost left, because originally Brit had the better proposal. We almost left. We almost left. But it ended up the way it did, so $298 difference, not worthy of making the change, but yeah.
Mike concerns the 70,000. It's that crystal ball. Do we do it or we do not?
And it's only nine facilities. I mean, I say that. It's not all of them. But if you actually look at that summary, if you look at that list of option A, all the properties, a lot of those deductibles with the 1% are pretty low.
You're not going to gain, yeah.
I mean, they're pretty low. We'd have to have a lot of buildings hit for that to add up to much. So we really chose the nine. I mean, they were the nine highest. We really looked at that. We can definitely add the police admin building. It will add some dollars to that, but...
Do you know the rough aggregate value of the other city properties, not counting the...
Not counting those nine?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't have that number.
Or just what a deductible might be if several of those buildings were damaged?
I think the only ones that we outlined were the nine, the six, and the two. I don't think we did... I didn't grab, like, any of the others. I'm sorry, I don't have that.
The calculator.
I'm sorry. To say the value of those others, it's a function of how big the hailstorm is, and presumably it's not going to hit all of our buildings in town. It'd be a question of which ones got hit simultaneously.
If it did, if you look at that list of properties, the total of all the properties with the Britt or Travelers wind and hail deductible, that 1% is 1.5 million dollars if every facility was hit.
Okay.
That's including the nine, though. That's all of them.
So there's no... You can probably... You probably know the chart better than me. There's no... Like, number 11 is not close enough to number 10? I'm counting the police training facility as number 10, but number 11 is not valued enough to where its deductible is going to be greater than 100,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? If not, do we have any public that would like to weigh in on this? I was hoping somebody from the public had a crystal ball, so... Okay, if not, I will bring it back.
Commissioners, if you're inclined to add the police training facility, just for clarity, for authority to execute that agreement, you would need, please, add that to the motion. Not trying to presume what you ultimately want to do, but if you want to add the police training facility in light of the fact that it's not part of that nine, we'll need authorization to authorize with the deductible buy down to include the police training facility.
And again, we're talking wind and hail.
Correct.
So, yeah, I was going to...
Mark Skidmore, 24, Crestview, Salina. The police training center for... The Travelers policy is going to cost $6,000 to $7,000, me just playing with a calculator. So then it's probably going to add a couple through two to three on the buy down, $1,000.
So when you're looking at wind and hail, that building's pretty stout when it comes to wind damage. The roof's new, which usually a new roof's a little more receptive to hail. When I say that, you get less hail damage because of a newer roof.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Just have we had the situation where the damage was low enough in dollar amount, we've just paid cash to fix it and not filed a claim?
Yes.
And that would not be included... Would that have been included in the claims listed for those three years?
Yes. It would have been the... It would have been the 2011 claim, that particular one. If those three buildings would be damaged after June 30th of this year, the minute... The other thing, and I don't know, we've not really talked a lot about it. I mentioned it, but not only is there a current 1% deductible, but there's also that $50,000 minimum. So that particular claim, the value, the damages of those three buildings was just under $13,000. So because there's a $50,000 minimum, if that was the only structures damaged, I wouldn't even turn that claim into Travelers. Or if we would have turned it in and we found it out after we turned it in, we would just basically shut that claim down and take care of that on our own.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess that... I'm generally a risk adverse person, but I think what allows me to have some comfort is that I would hope that the damage would be minimal to the building, and we would just pay it rather than... If we're far from the minimum, otherwise my initial instinct is just to cover everything. But you start looking at what that costs over a long period of time, because Murphy's Law says the building you don't cover is the one that's going to get hit. But...
And I mean, again, our history has been very favorable. Three claims in 19 years is really nothing to speak about. But now that we've all said this and had this conversation...
I'll look to my colleagues who deal with the numbers and this type of entity a little more often, and I'm available to be convinced.
What classifies wind versus tornado? Tornado is considered wind, a strong wind. Okay. I was thinking, okay, is that... Okay. Okay.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm... Yes? Sorry, if I could clarify my prior statement, and not presume where you're headed, but if you're inclined to add the police training facility, looking at the resolution, it includes two references to the nine highest valued buildings. So I think if you change that to the 10 highest valued buildings, and it also then includes a reference to the buy down deductible, or the amount being 69,667. I think if you just amended it to the 10 highest buildings without reference to the premium and give enough authority to add that one additional building, if that's where you're headed.
Okay. Okay, that being said, I'm going to move that we authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Travelers Property and Casualty Company of America slash the Travels Indemnity Company for the renewal of the city's comprehensive property casualty insurance program, period. I am excluding the Lloyds policy, just as a point of clarification.
And is that on nine or 10 properties?
He's excluding.
Oh, he's excluding, that's right. Yeah. My supplemental coverage.
Okay. I might touch on that.
Okay, we've got a motion.
And a city attorney is dying to say something.
Well, sorry for the technicality, but inasmuch as we are dealing with a resolution...
We need to approve the resolution.
I suppose if the movement might adapt the motion so that it is in terms of the resolution, section one, I think speaks to the motion. Section two is what spoke to the Lloyds of London buy down.
Okay. I would so amend my motion to adopt a resolution precluding section two.
Okay. Have a motion. Do we have a second? I guess I will second that. Do we have a motion, a second, to approve resolution number 207837 without the Lloyds of London? All in favor? Okay.
Excuse me, could I have a clarification really quick about where we're going with this? Are you proposing... And I should have asked this. Are you proposing that we then come back and approve section two separately, or is this...
No, no. Let me make this clear. I'm proposing we renew the policy without the supplemental deductible coverage.
Okay.
I just don't think that it works out. We're spending money hand over fist, and, you know, I think the risk is worth it.
So then our exposure would be minimum 50,000 for any claim?
For wind and hail, it'd be 1% of each building value with a minimum of $100,000, a minimum of $50,000.
Per building or per...
Per building.
So 50,000's the minimum?
Right. So three buildings and 50,000, if they're... Each 40,000, we take the 50,000 minimum. So for three buildings, it's 150,000 that year?
It'd be the 1%. The 50,000 is the minimum per occurrence. Sorry. The 50,000 is the minimum per occurrence. So if the 1% aggregates to more than 50,000, then it's the 1% aggregated number.
So it's... So the occurrence meaning all the buildings? So that can include eight buildings?
Anyone windstorm. It's going to be if a windstorm takes out a small restroom at the park, it's going to be $50,000. If it takes out a bunch of stuff and that 1% equals $80,000, then it's 80,000. It's not 50,000 per building.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, I'm doing this because in my mind, looking at the past 20 years, you got $600,000 of exposure, and we're going to spend 1.4 million to protect from that. That doesn't make sense to me now, acknowledging that next year, we might have a $650,000 claim. I mean, that's the nature of risk.
Okay. Okay. Great. So again, we have a motion, a second, to approve resolution 207837, renewing the agreement with Travelers Property and Casualty, excluding the Lloyds of London. Did I say that right? That sound good? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that leads us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, Salina Media Connection Agreement Discussion.
Okay. There you are.
Sit over here.
Okay.
Mayor Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. About a year ago, we started a discussion with Salina Media Connection to negotiate a new contract with them. We've had a relationship with Salina Media Connection since the early 90s. They provide our broadcasting of our meetings, and they do study sessions, meetings, they do things throughout the community, and they broadcast those on the public, educational, governmental, or PEG television channels on Cox Cable. During that timeframe, we negotiated with Salina Media Connection a new agreement. That agreement was approved in October, and it started on January 1st. The term of that agreement goes from January 1st of 2020 to December 31st of 2020. I'm just going to kind of highlight a couple of the things that we did that are different from the previous agreements that we had with Salina Media Connection, if you'll indulge me here. Basically, the agreement just kind of outlines what it is that they'll do for us. So it outlines that they'll cable cast a certain number of hours of different programming on their channels. They'll video and airstream the live video of on-demand replay, regular meetings, special meetings with the city commission, different other meetings for the city. So you have Planning Commission, Building Advisory Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, the Heritage Commission, all the city meetings that they broadcast. They'll also replay those meetings several times on those channels. So they play the city commission meeting. It airs live right now, and then they'll play it two more times before the next meeting. So that was something that was specified that was new. They would also put a schedule out on their website. We had some issues in the past where we didn't really know what was actually going to be planned, so we specified that they would put a schedule out, and it would be kind of consistent, and they've done that for sure. Another thing that we asked for is closed captioning. Closed captioning, at this point, they are closed captioning the live meetings, at least the live city commission meeting that goes out. The replays are not closed captioned. They're still working on that. They bought the technology to do it, but it's not fully in place. And that is one area of the agreement. They were supposed to have that fully in place by May 15th, and that hasn't necessarily happened, but they are working towards that. And then the last thing that I'll highlight is that we asked for monthly reports from Salina Media Connection. And basically, what we asked for is an accounting. We're trying to account for how much volume of the different kind of things and programs that they are out there doing, and then trying to get an accounting of the viewership. So we asked for the number of programs, the number of producers, and the number of meetings that they recorded, the website analytics, so we could see who was going to their website, who's been using their website, the different social media analytics, so who's watching their shows on Facebook, who's watching on YouTube, those sorts of things. We also asked for the number of volunteer hours, the number of volunteers that are actually working at Salina Media Connection. We asked them to report any errors that they had, you know, with any of their visual or audio quality. And then we also asked for other revenue expenditures and some of those sorts of things, the board meeting minutes in the monthly reports. And we have received monthly reports. That's something that's been kind of an ongoing. We've been working through the monthly reports to refine those and make sure that the data's kind of what we want, what we're looking for. And I will say, a lot of the things that we put in place in the agreement, they have made a lot of improvements on. They have updated their website. Their streaming software is much better. Social media, they're taking... Using that to a much better extent than they had in the past. They placed a camera in 107B that they'll use to stream study sessions. And they've also provided a pretty consistent schedule, so you can go out and see what's going to be on, and it's very consistent, and it's been working for them. Closed captioning, as I said, is something that they're working on, not quite there yet, but it's something they've done. I do want to mention that there have been some quality issues that we've seen with Salina Media Connection. These are some of the same issues that we saw while we were negotiating this contract last year. Sometimes the... You have a blank screen on channel 20 or 21, low-quality audio, low-quality video, those sorts of things. Audio seems to be the most consistent complaint that we get. We get a lot of complaints about people having to turn their TV all the way up in order to hear it. I've had complaints about hearing there'd be like a separate audio stream that was going through at the same time, so it was like there was another channel that was playing on top while the meetings are going. And a couple of other concerns that we have, they continue to deal with a staff turnover. There's been a lot of different employees working there, and they don't have an executive director at this point. So really, the intention of this discussion, the contract that we have, it does run through the entire year, but if we are interested in making any sort of changes to that contract, then we need to provide notice to Salina Media Connection by July 1st of our intent to do that. So we have a couple of different options for you, and I'll just kind of go through those. First option, if you don't want to do anything, if you don't see if there's any need to do anything, there's no action that needs to take place. The contract will just continue to run, and it will continue to do kind of what we're doing. The second option would be to direct staff to provide some sort of formal notice. It's actually notice of intent to terminate, is what the agreement says, the contract with Salina Media Connection. And then you could direct us to meet back with Salina Media Connection, bolster the agreement that we currently have, add some things in there if you think there's something necessary. Or the last option would be you could direct staff to provide formal notice of intent to terminate the agreement with Salina Media Connection, and then direct us to look at alternate service delivery methods. Last year, we did kind of do a preliminary review of what's out there. We do think that there are providers that can provide the meeting casting. Probably won't be able to find somebody that's going to be able to do some of the onsite or the community things that Salina Media Connection does, but we could do at least the broadcasting of city meetings. And actually, during the time where we've had to kind of make adjustments for COVID-19, in order to make sure that we are meeting all of our requirements for open meetings, we have set our own iPad up in the back, and we're live streaming this kind of on our own separate feed to YouTube Live. So that's something that city staff internally is doing, and we could certainly explore that more in the future, if that's something that the city or the city commission was interested in. So with that, there are several board members in the audience here. If you have any questions for them, or if you have any questions for me about the contract, about performance, anything like that, be happy to try and answer those questions. And I know that some of the board members would be happy to speak, if you would like that as well.
One question. Are the monthly reports available for public viewing?
They... I believe that they're posted on the website. They actually do a really good job of posting all of their minutes and their financial reports, all of that stuff on their website. I believe they're available on the website.
Last year, we sort of specified in a similar blue sheet, the... You know, our sort of wish list, we had a real long wish list, and then we sort of cut it down to, well, these are the minimum things that we think we need to see significant progress being made in, you know, to continuous line of media connection as the provider. Some have been accomplished, having been on the receiving end of the audio a couple of weeks ago. Granted, we were still using the speakerphone for... of weeks ago. Granted, we were still using the, the speakerphone for, it wasn't your ideal recording situation, but depending which one of those three streams, you know, I was either 25 seconds behind the meeting, you know, when I heard the Pledge of Allegiance end on the phone, but it was just beginning on one of the video feeds, and I imagine that would throw people off if they wanted to participate. If one of us was, was calling, of course, we'd probably be on the phone. But the, the audio issues really need to be worked out. I'd like to see some of these things specified if we decide to renew the contract. And the newer contract lists very clearly these things which have to be accomplished. And, you know, this being June, you know, I would put an earlier time next year, like March or April, rather than July, because that still gives nine months to, to complete nothing but be certain minimum things that we, that we need.
If, if we were to look at an alternative service, how would that, how would we need to communicate that with the county in USD 305? Does that come into play?
I think we could communicate with the county pretty easily. Whatever we do for this building is going to have some sort of camera setup, and we talked to different players that would, some of them would be able to just provide a setup of cameras. You may have to have some staff person that actually hits the on button. We could coordinate with the county for sure on that. Right now, they pay about $15,000 to Salina Media Connection to provide that service.
So on top of our 220, they get 15 from the county?
That's correct. And school district, I'm not actually sure how that, that part of it works. We don't, we don't require them to do anything with the school district or to cast those. That's a, that's a separate agreement, or just a separate arrangement with Salina Media Connection and the school. I'm sure one of them could speak to that. But as far as the county, I think we could work with them to make sure that we had an alternate service that would work for both entities in this building.
At the time that you followed up with some alternate providers to kind of do some, I guess, some background work on that, did you also look at some other cities? I know there are a couple of other cities in Kansas who in fact do this in-house. Hutchinson and Manhattan come to mind, and they simply have an in-house staff member do the recording. Now, I don't know what kind of backup infrastructure, I mean, what kind of infrastructure they have to support that. I don't know how they do it, but that would possibly be another option to a commercial provider.
At the time, we really didn't spend a whole lot of time. We just kind of got some very preliminary views from, from a very high level of a couple of companies that provide this service. We didn't dig into all the details as far as, you know, the amount of time a staff person we would need, and the kind of cameras and equipment we would need and all the, if that's something that the City Commission is interested in, we certainly could do that research. But at the time, you know, really, we weren't interested in moving forward with somebody outside of Salina Media Connection, so we didn't spend the time to put all that together.
Yeah, I think at the time, we kind of framed up, we could pursue one, or both, or neither, and, and the priority that the commission gave to us at that point was to see what we could do with Salina Media Connection. In fact, I think the goal was to report back kind of midway through that six months, so that if something didn't work out with Salina Media Connection, we had some more time to pursue alternatives. But that didn't, that wasn't necessary last year, because we ultimately entered into this agreement.
I guess this isn't a question, it's more, it's more of a comment, but if we do decide as a consensus to pursue another alternative, I really like the idea of, of being able to do it in-house. I don't know how many staff that would require, but I think that it's something that I'd, I'd like to, to see us look into. I guess my, my question is, and first of all, I want to thank Mr. Stevens, who did answer an email that I sent to him earlier a day, earlier today, expressing some of my concerns and frustrations, but specifically about the audio. I mean, I get that, I get that all the time. I mean, almost weekly, someone texts or emails and says, "I can't hear it." And that's, that's really frustrating, and I'd kind of like to know, you know, where's the glitch? How do we fix it? When's it going to be fixed? And I get that that's a Salina Media Connection question. And then the, the other thing is, when we got to the beginning of the COVID-19, it seemed that there were several occasions where something had to be restarted across the street. And we basically took a 10 or 15-minute timeout, machine or technology had to get reset. And I, I can't speak for anybody else up here, but it got to the point where I was, I mean, it was, it was, it was, it was almost laughable. I mean, and I hate to say that, but it was just like, okay, here, here we, here we go again. And so at any rate, those are, those are my concerns about continuing on the path that we're on right now.
And just one other thing, I'd like to say, if there's any absolutely necessary equipment that your current budget doesn't allow for, that, that you know is crucial to provide what we're asking for, I, I think we need to know about it to see if there's any way that we can arrange to help get it. Rather than try to build Band-Aids around it, I mean, if there's something simple that you just don't have the money for, you know, I'm speaking for myself only, but I'd rather try to find a way to get the equipment so we can get what we need, rather than continually be, be frustrated.
Any other questions for staff?
A question for staff, if we were to move in the direction of soliciting proposals, whether that be through an RFP or an RFQ, or maybe trying to emulate a setup in another community to do it in-house, given all the stuff that's going on, could we get that done and implemented in a six-month timeframe?
I appreciate you asking.
Well, I thought you might.
I'm, I'm not prepared to say that we could. We could certainly research it, and implementation is the concern, but the goal would be to implement before the end of the year, or to figure out where we're at and negotiate some, you know, shorter-term agreement for what Salina Media Connection.
Well, where I'm going is I would hate to get to December and then be told, oh, we can't make this happen in January. That kind of doesn't put us in a very positive light. And I think if we pursue that option, maybe one thing to do would be to have a six-month extension to the current lease, so we would have a year to get that done, if that is, if that would deal with that time concern on part of the staff. I presume that if we ask for proposals, we would invite Salina Media Connection to submit a proposal.
We certainly could.
I mean, I, I see no reason to exclude that. I just, you know, I think it would be, give us some other options.
Admittedly, I hear the sound complaint too, and I've heard it after we kind of went into this agreement. I don't know that we identified that and factored it into the agreement. So as we deal with RFPs, or if Salina Media Connection were to submit a proposal, we're going to need some, I think we're going to need some technical expertise beyond what city staff has to put the RFP together and then, you know, analyze the response. If it were just, if it's truly an open proposal, if it's a provider and they're bringing in their entire system and, and they're doing more of a qualifications-based, here's our product, here's what we can do for you, reset, that may not be as technically challenging for us, if that makes any sense.
In that scenario, though, we'd have to specify what we are asking for a proposal for. You know, we're broadcasting the meeting ourselves in some form or fashion, but are they going to show up at an NAACP Freedom Fund Bank? Or are they going to show up at a VFW function? Are they going to show up at a high school parade, the Christmas parade? The outside services that do the meetings aren't going to do that. They're not going to have local programming.
I would, I would not expect that to occur.
Other than bringing it in-house, I don't think it would either.
You know, private nonprofit agency provide that kind of coverage if that was desired to be continued. You know?
My view is that, that Salina Media would continue their, their public and their educational mission. They could do that, and that the governmental broadcasts of the meetings ought to be, we ought to take those in-house. I mean, I don't think they've been consistent, or the quality hasn't been there. So I would like to test the waters and finding the other options, but I would expect them to continue to want to pursue the other portions of their PEG.
Just as, just as an aside, the stream actually went down about 10 minutes ago, so we're not broadcasting on the cable channels right now. So we're streaming live on, on YouTube Live and on the internet, but it is not casting.
Would this be an opportunity to ask the mayor for a five-minute recess?
In the, well, historically, if it, when we're able to have attendance in the room, it's gone down, and we've just let it be down and come back up. It's when, that was our only means of, of having a public meeting and allowing the public to participate, that we felt the need to stop the meeting until the feed came back up.
Well, the reason, there is a 25-second difference between those two sources of broadcasting.
That's because...
Go to the mic.
Longer than that?
Can you go to the mic?
Forty-five.
The 25-second delay is...
Please give your name. I'm sorry. We know who you are, but could you give your name and...
Greg Stevens.
Thank you.
842-SOUT-TEN. The 25-second delay is because one of the, the streaming gets sent to the cloud, and then it goes back to the cha, to YouTube or wherever it's going. So that's a natural delay that all streaming services have. When we send, we send directly to our channel, and it's, it goes out on the air a little bit quicker. So that's, that's nothing that anybody can do anything about. It's just that there's two different systems. One of them goes up to the cloud and then comes back, and the other one is directly across the street.
I think when people are just watching a meeting, it doesn't matter much. With the restrictions we've had recently, where we've had interaction from home, it made a big difference. Because, you know, I would perhaps want to raise a comment about an issue, and the votes already occurred, because that, that's 45 seconds, not 25, but it's, or someone would call in after the discussion on, on an issue that already closed. I mean, it's not, I'm not fault, I mean, it had nothing to do with Salina Media Connection. It's just that when we have different methods of broadcasting, they're not necessarily in sync with each other.
We were required in the contract to send it out to YouTube and what have you, so we had been doing that. And the feed we have over here would be delayed compared to the feed that we were doing over there. So I, I think that's a situation that's going to exist regardless of any system that you have, if you're going to send it streaming and directly to the channel.
Right, for our regularly, for meetings, the way we normally do it, it's not a problem. It's only when we had to have interaction back in, into this room, yeah.
And the COVID thing did create audio issues that we got blamed for to a certain extent, because sometimes the audio that came in through the system that was rigged up wasn't as good as the audio that we were getting, believe it or not, from you guys talking into the microphones. Part of the issue is the microphone use, and everybody's been doing a better job. I have to compliment you on that. But that's, that's an ongoing issue that probably should be part of the orientation for new commissioners is, is the microphone usage and what have you. A lot of the, of the COVID issues have kind of been built into some of the issues that we've experienced, because some of our vendors that we work with, we have one piece of equipment that we can't get until July. It's just that, you know, they're, everybody's working from home, and they were all changed and what have you. And we did buy new equipment in January, and we trained staff after, after we bought the new equipment. So what was it, February, March, that was starting to hit? And so I think that needs to be taken into account. There are a lot of positives here. If I could go on, there are a lot of positives. We've met most of the requirements. Contract lists 20 or 30 different things that we had to start doing, and we've met a lot of them. I think, I don't think you change a culture or you turn a boat around in a year, but I do think that we deserve another year at least to see if we can work through this other issue that's out there, which is the audio issue. We realize that. It might be right back here. It might be we have to buy new equipment back here. And we did finance what we put in over there. We tried to do it on a very frugal way. It didn't cost you any money. We spent $100,000 over there, so if we go with a new vendor, we're sitting on a lot of great equipment. We got some of the best equipment, and we were able to pay for it out of the budget, not asking for any increase in budget last year. And I think that's a positive, is because what are we going to do with that now? We're set up now to start working on some things that need to be worked on, which is marketing. It's very difficult to start marketing before you have your system working the way you want it to work. And here's an example of one of the things that we're doing. This morning, we started Kids Connection, and it's a program that's designed for kids 5 to 12. And it is part of an effort by multiple groups and organizations in the community, the Arts Center, the Foundation, I could list several more. And we're putting it on from 10 to 11, and from 4 to 5. And we're going to run it during the summer so that we have an activity for parents and kids to do, given that they don't have all the opportunities that they had before. And it's local, and that's one of the great benefits that we have. We're a community media in a time in which community media is not as prevalent as it has been. We, we provide civic engagement. There are a lot of people that watch these meetings that aren't able to attend the meetings. We provide transparency. You heard a lot about it this, earlier on, is a way for people to kind of keep, keep up to date on what's going on, and we're local. We've got former employees and students that have gone on to make careers that, in media. We have, and Deborah can talk about this, but we have a former employee, student, that came back from New York and works in the studio periodically. So there are a lot of things that people don't know about. One thing I'd really encourage you all to do is walk across the street and come over and visit us. Drop in and see what we're doing. It was mentioned that we don't have an executive director. Well, we might have something better than that. We have a management team. We have Nancy Klostermeyer, who's one of the leading organizational experience in volunteers. And our volunteer numbers have jumped from 40, 75 a month to over 400 a month. And we have Deborah Cox, who's a rehabilitation counselor. I'm going to let them make a comment or two, because they've, they've got a different perspective. So if you both could come on up and say something.
Hi, I'm Deborah Cox, 1119 North 7 Salina. I am part of the three-person management team at Salina Media Connection since March. And what my background is, is not necessarily in media. I'm, I always tell everybody I'm not a techie, but I am a work counselor, a rehabilitation counselor. I, for 35 years, have worked with the state of Kansas, and now I'm working on my doctorate, so I am doing other things. And this has become one of the other things. When I started volunteering at Salina Media When I started volunteering at Salina Media Connection, I had not been there since I started in something like 1996, being active over there, making shows and doing things. I could use that technology. Technology has changed. I can't really, I'm not as familiar and not as good with the technology now, since it's changed. I think the last time I actually did a show was probably 2008 until this current time. But when I got there, what I saw was the encouragement of the students in this community to work there. And we have some wonderful technicians, some who are beginning to be wonderful and some that just aren't wonderful. And this year, we did lose some because they graduated. We had four graduates in our community, two KSU, K-State Salina graduates, one lives up north now in Kansas and has started working on her own. Another, a real techie person, Matt has two or three states vying for his services. So he did leave us, but said, he did say, "You have my contact information. You know how to contact me if you have a problem." And then we do have something new. I call it YAC, Y-A-A-C, Young Adult Advisory Committee. Because younger folks are just really, they just grew up with technology, we want to use that skill that they have and that energy that they have. So another one of our graduates, a new person on the board, is a younger person, and she has just graduated from high school. And we have already about seven or eight folks who are interested in becoming part of the youth advisory committee. It's interesting. I've met with half of them, but the other half I can't get in the office because they already have plans of how they're going to utilize Salina Media Connection to further their endeavors that they're doing in the community. So we are broadening our contacts and our reach. And so when we say we've lost folks, we've lost them to jobs, but they are still connected to us. And I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of where some of those went. They graduated, and now we are continuing to have younger people join us. I do want to say that Greg mentioned that we help provide community involvement. I was listening to the folks who were presenting earlier about the police issues that we're nationally talking about. And I'm thinking, I'm going to date myself now, 20 years ago, we were in this community talking about policing. And 20 years ago, there was a man going from Los Angeles, California, from his LA Times job, to Washington DC to his post-job. He had just gotten a new job. Right outside of Salina, he was stopped by state troopers, not our police, but state troopers. And he wrote an article when he got to his new job, and that article went all over the country. I was working with some multicultural students at Kansas Wesleyan, and so we used that as a discussion guide. And we actually invited that man to come and talk about policing. With him, I also invited a friend and a colleague, well, and a former college friend to come and do that conference. It turned into a multicultural conference at Kansas Wesleyan, and it was called Driving While Black. 20 years ago, we had a huge community conversation about that kind of thing. And since it's 20 years, we have a new show on Salina Media Connections channel called Salina Connected. I thought it would be interesting, this is even before the newest policing issues that started, I invited Daryl Fears, who is the writer of the Washington Post, who was stopped outside of Salina, and I asked Kevin Wilmot, who also joined us at that conference, who is a playwright and not a former Salinan, but went to college here and considers this one of his homes, to come back, actually to be interviewed by me on Salina Connected. That's going to be coming up very soon. I finally got ahold of both of them, and both of them are just very anxious and want to do this Zoom interview about policing. So that's one way Salina Media Connection helps with community conversations. I do want to say, because I'm proud of both of these guys, Daryl Fears just got a Pulitzer Prize last month for the work he's done at the Washington Post, and last year, Kevin Wilmot got an Oscar. So we have connections all over the United States that I just can't wait to call and ask to connect back to Salina so we can continue these different community conversations. That's what's exciting about being at Salina Media Connection. Outside of working with the people with so many skills, and they're so bright and so promising, it's doing things that help people talk about what's going on. And we aren't professionals, most of us aren't. Some of us will be, but we are community media, and so you're allowed to make mistakes, not on the sound. We want to get that better. And there needs to be some study by us and maybe with some help to figure out why some of this is happening. Greg kind of told you about the delays. But we want to be the best that we can be. We're not sitting on anything. We're using everything that we can think of to try to solve the problems. But in addition to working on problems, we're also working with community folks. And I haven't even mentioned the several folks who have contacted me about some possible programs and projects they want to see us do. We're part of, we're you guys. We're the community. And it's a pleasure to be there every day, and it's even a pleasure to work on solving a lot of the problems that we have day to day. My focus is staffing and managing the office, and I just, I love being there every day. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Deborah.
Nancy Klostermeyer, 660 South Santa Fe. And as alluded to, I'm part of the management team as well as the current chair of the board. And just want to quickly say that in terms of the issues that we really do want to help you resolve the issues here, I know we talk about all of the other community things we do, and important as those are, our primary goal is to meet your needs as well. And we have been in touch with the technicians, and it just seems that when you get new technology, it doesn't relate to the old technology, and now we're trying to patch things together with what you have and what we have, and so that's part of the issue. It is something that we're working diligently on. As far as the staff changes, I have to say we have some of the best staff now that I've observed. They're really dedicated. They have great technical skills, and they're really passionate about it, and they've got experience, too. So I'm pleased with the staff we have on hand now and the potential for getting some interns and others on board. So I think the future looks good from that standpoint, and I would like to just alleviate concern about that issue. Thank you.
And we appreciate you allowing us to make some comments and answer questions. And if you have more, we'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public, please?
I'm Lynne Meyer from Salina. I know nothing about technology way over my head, and I am not associated with this line of media in any way in terms of being involved. I do know the people that, some of the people that work there, and I do feel that they come from a sense of honesty, integrity, and trust, and have the best interest of our community in mind. I think in the big, big picture, we need to take a look at the big picture, and common sense would tell me that it's not just about the money. It's about who these folks are and what they're willing to do for our community. And if you've got this kind of quality of people involved in our community, why in the world would you consider bringing some outside source in to do it, just because of the money factor? I think it's time to use that common sense and to really look at a big picture. Thank
Joan Ratzleff, Salina. And I don't have anything to read, so here goes. I've been involved with Access TV a little bit as a volunteer, taped some shows for, you know, the Lunch and Learns for legal women voters, and then COVID came along. But what I see is with, I want to call it access, community access TV, because it's access for the community to use television for us locally. And as a layperson, I think that's important because it shows that anyone can make a show. They don't have to be a professional. I think that it shows that we're all neighbors in this town. 45,000, 50,000 people is a lot of people. You can kind of get lost in your own little bubble with that size. And I say I've lived in all kinds of places, with hundreds of thousands of people, millions of people, down to a few hundred. And this is a nice size, but I think we're missing some opportunities. I think that we could better support some opportunities to build community in this town so that we feel more like we're all neighbors with one another. And Salina Media Connection has great potential to do that, and I would like to see more effort from our city commission in seeing that those opportunities are given a good, strong support. We had a hackathon, oh, gosh, I think it was a year and a half ago now, maybe, and it seemed to me, from my memory, and I was there, and several of you were there, that it identified, over everything else, was a need to build community in Salina. And that was an interesting event. It was very positive. There was a lot of community involvement. I think there was about 80 people there. And there, I want to, I have a request from the city commission. If you could request a report on that event and see what we can do to follow up, that kind of a thing could be on a community, part of our community access, high school kids making shows, just community groups of all kinds, art movies, you name it. This is an opportunity to help us grow as a community. So I want to encourage you to support continuing. I don't want to lose that aspect of Salina Media Connection that is community access to television, rather than just televising government meetings, which is great, but it can be so much more than that.
Hello. Miranda here in town on Fifth Street. Miranda Bachmann. I just wanted to say thank you to the commissioners who showed up to the Father's Day barbecue yesterday. I thought that was great, and it shows a lot of support and community. That being said, I would really like to see, you know, I had this whole speech prepared about all the allocations of refunding that we can do, but really, when it comes down to it, it's the community access programs here in town that are so grossly underfunded that it's just crazy. And it may be the single mother in me speaking, the person who has to learn to buy milk before meat, but you really have to start getting some of these monies back into this community a lot better, and it can prevent a lot more things that we have to deal with in the longer picture. So I'll leave my big speech for the next time, but I just wanted to say that these programs, like this community access television, is huge, and you guys really have a big community here that wants to do a lot, and you're really missing a huge opportunity in getting them engaged. So thank you for all your time.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back up here to the commission for discussion.
Sorry, I forgot to mention one thing I think is really important, and that is, no offense to our journal reporter, I'm glad he's here, but we don't have the local paper that we used to. And again, you know, Salina Media Connection is poised to provide news, local news.
True. Discussion?
Well, I'm firmly convinced that Salina Media Connection should be given another year, but with very clear expectations as far as the audio and the video. And obviously, Deborah already started momentum moving in the direction of clearing up the problems. So it may be a problem that we don't actually have to overaddress, but I think setting a certain time here by which we'd really like to know this is fixed and find out if there's other hardware that needs to be done. I think this is too valuable a resource to break up right now. The problem with splitting off meetings is that I would hope that at some point, just what might be considered to some mundane covering of meetings offers an opportunity for younger people to get some training on how to do some relatively easy broadcasting. And it's a one-stop shop for people who want to engage Salina. You can watch the meetings, and you have the cultural offerings. The other problem with splitting off the meetings is you then have to decide how you're going to fund it, because obviously, the cost of providing the service in-house has to be accounted for. And the obvious source would be to take it out of the franchise fee from cable. And if you cut that down too far, you end up crippling Salina Media certainly way before they can generate funding on their own.
In 2007, we were told they would raise the money to do that, and that effort was never made.
Although probably a different organization, and I remember that. Yeah, I remember that.
I'm just saying, this has gone on for a long time.
We're going to just let us finish here for a second, okay, and we'll get you back up here.
But at that time, also, one thing we realized last year, we had never told them exactly what we expected in the agreement. You know, so we are now, as of 2019, saying, well, look, this is what we expect. This is what you have to deliver, or you run the risk of not getting the contract. So it was everything done? No. Were some things done? And I think the COVID crisis actually showed the advantage of having a local organization like this, because you can be nimble and flexible on your feet if times demand that you have to use alternate methods of communication and broadcasting. I think with the civil engagement that some of our young and older people have expressed recently, the television station provides an excellent opportunity to be used. I mean, it's a very unique service, and you know, you'd be wanting flowers on the street downtown because it set a certain ambiance. We have art on our sidewalks. I mean, this is something very, very unique that makes up for a lot of Salina's identity. is something very, very unique that makes up for a lot of Salina's identity. I just think we have to be firm with what we want, but I, I don't think this is the time to change direction in that big of a, of a manner.
And I, I struggle. I see that some of the younger folks have, have come back into the room, and I'm glad of that, because I'd like to hear from you when we get to discussing the format for our town hall. But also, in terms of, you know, obviously, I have issues with quality that I mentioned previously. I saw, and in terms of how it's getting done, you know, Mr. Skregg has had, Mr. Gardner, Ms. Hind Constantino, a gentleman from community or computer technology who I don't know his name. But I feel like, you know, we've been very responsive on the city's part, adopting an all-hands-on-deck model and trying to, to make this work. I'm, I understand the, the, the desire to be able to create community content, but sitting in this chair where I am right now, my primary concern, at least at this moment, is making sure that our meetings are, are broadcast consistently, with a consistent quality. And why I am turning to look at the younger generation, I don't know how much you rely on using studio time in a television studio to create content at, at this point. I mean, I, I, sometimes I, I struggle a little bit trying to justify that, that relevancy when you can just go out and, and I can put my own programming on YouTube. I just, I'm, I'm really struggling with this. I, I know that a lot of you see this as a very valuable resource in the community in terms of documenting community events, getting people involved to, to get some experience in, in media, but I'm, I'm, I'm really, I, I would propose that we do something on a much more interim level to be able to revisit this conversation in a few months and see if the audio issues have been resolved. That's, I mean, if people can't hear our meetings, it doesn't, the service isn't, isn't what it needs to be.
Mayor, were you going to let Mr. Stevens come back to the podium?
Yeah, I mean, if we wanted to finish.
I have a question for him. Well, there is something I'd like to know from him.
Okay.
If it's all right, if I ask. Your board, Mr. Stevens, how is that composed? How do you recruit the people for that, through your bylaws? It seems to me, people just get invited to attend, and I'm having trouble seeing how that is distinguished from what the younger people were saying earlier, is our law enforcement board. You've had a lot of turnover in the last year, trouble keeping members. I think that's a source of, of your problems, is that you don't have any consistent vision of what your efforts are.
Well, that's a good question. We're changing a little bit, and sometimes cultural changes are difficult, and we need to change. We need to do what you guys are asking us to do. Three or four years ago, we, Access TV gave up on volunteers, and I think volunteers are still a source of success for community media. We recruit through different means. We post online, and we don't have a full board now because we are working towards trying to bring a diverse representation from the community. That's in our contract with, with, it's in our bylaws, is that we should have a diverse board. So we're looking for boards, members with different talents to bring to the organization. So we have a young person now, and that brings us that young voice, but we also have people from Kansas Westland, K-State, myself, and retired folks and people that are working that are volunteer group that does the football games and have been doing them for years, are represented on the board. So one of the things that Nancy's bringing as board chair is board orientation in the next month with an individual she knows. And we had planned on doing that, but COVID kind of made that difficult, but that's something we need to work on. When, we had some personnel issues, which I don't want to talk about, a year or so ago, the first issue that we kind of focused on was technology. And then we needed to focus on staff development and board orientation and fundraising, like Rod says. We've received six grants, more funding than ever before in probably all the years combined. And that takes grant writers, and it takes building, building relationships and those kinds of things. So I can see that continuing is, as we have more success. But I don't know if we're going to be able to totally fund the organization through grants, given what's happened, and there's, with the economy being a little less reliable, I don't know if the funders are going to, to fund. And funding an access station with a grant is less important than some other things, sometimes for some of these funders. But we've been successful. We applied for a couple more that we didn't get. Mike wrote a letter in support of a Dane Hanson grant. That's one we didn't get, but we got a smaller Dane Hanson grant. So I'm real proud of our effort to increase funding. The report that you got says that it's 90% funded by the city. It's not. I think it's about 80%. So we're pushing that number back down again. And that's the average for access stations all over the country, is 80% funded by the franchise fees of the cable customers that, like myself, that want to watch access local. And so we're willing to pay that fee. And the studies that we've done, and we're going to try to do one this year, which will be a survey of customers, there's been three of them done, and a lot of your older folks like access TV. And so that's a group, Commissioner Hodges, that don't necessarily rely upon their, their computer for YouTube and what have you. But we're, we're prepared to start reaching that audience through Roku and Apple TV and those things. And we're going to have our Roku app up as soon as they approve it. It's been taking some time, and Apple TV takes longer. So the cord cutters will be able to get our programs. And the future trend for all this media is video content is still going to be the most popular thing that people want to watch. And we're positioned to do a better job and increase that in the future because we've addressed some of these things. Now we need to start telling our story better. We're not very good at that, but we're, we're, we formed a marketing committee, and they haven't met yet, but they're going to start meeting. And there's some people from the community that aren't affiliated with access that are going to be on it. So that's part of what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
So we very much would like to go another year, see if we can try to address this audio issue. I think we can.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't mean to address, but I wanted Mr. Stevens to have a moment to say everything he wanted to say, and then I was curious about that board situation. I, I think despite our requests for the detail of the past year, all the other positions and questions that we asked, our one concern has been for the quality of our own meetings and the broadcast of those, and that's my major concern. In all the conversation, we get confused about public and educational and the governmental portions of this. I think that access TV would be stronger if it were only responsible for the public and the educational portions. I think they can solicit better, they can organize their mission better around if they're not distracted by what the public meetings that we feel need to be of a consistent and, and high quality. I don't think that they have the professional staff over there and the knowledge base and the, and the people that they have to give us what we want. I'm, I'm concerned about their equipment issues. Maybe if their equipment is where they need it to be to continue the public and the educational portions, it'll be a plus for them if we look for another provider or a, a model that's modeled after another city for our, for our needs. But I'm, I'm not talking about defunding them. There should be money available to, to help them continue their mission. That in concert with their ability to raise funds, I, I think that they can continue the public and the educational portions of what they do. But I'm, I think that the, the city should consider terminating the agreement and the Salina Media Connection, with Salina Media Connection direct the staff to research what our alternatives are.
I probably am a little bit with Commissioner Franz and maybe trying to do an extension to give ourselves time, because one of the things I had written down here was government meetings versus public and then the educational channel. I think there's, where do we fall into that? And maybe we just, you know, we get to the point where they, we give them a stipend for what they're doing, and then they go out and do their fundraising. Commissioner Hodges a little bit ago said when we were starting with the COVID, it was kind of sitting here, it was laughable. I, I didn't find it laughable, I found it embarrassing. It was embarrassing. It wasn't, and I turned on, and I tried to watch Channel 20 and 21 at times, and there was a study session, and there was no volume. And to me, that's, it's like when I started in banking, you had an ATM. It was worse to have an ATM that didn't work than to not have an ATM at all. And that's a little bit where I'm coming from with, 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 with this, when we're doing our government meetings. I feel like I'd rather not have anything on the screen than have something that was that, that quality. So I've got comments here, a lot of them go along with what everyone said. I'm probably at that point where I'd like to, to send out an RFP or whatever and, and see what's out there, and then try to figure out how we, how we get the government side of it taken care of, and then if we're going to do something on the, on the other side, how we, how we help them with that to some extent, if that's what we're going to do.
Would that also be influenced by how close they are to having the problem solved?
We've been having that problem since I've been on the commission.
Well, and, and again, no one held them to the fire to fix it. We just automatically...
I thought we kind of did.
Well, last year was the first time, because it was just an automatic renewal for years and years and years. Last year was the first time we actually gave them a list of things that have to be fixed. Now, if, you know, they found a lot of old equipment. Now, if the equipment's been fixed, if they're getting ready, do the closed captioning. Those are things that we asked for, that it, all didn't get done within the, the time allotted. But on the other hand, they are investing time and effort to, to do it. Now, equipment delays, you know, things being on back order, none of us have any control over that. But, you know, if they're close, I think they need a, a chance to show they can do it. I mean, if we want to, you know, say, okay, you got 120 days. And I don't know if the provisions in the, probably couldn't be 120, because it only leaves us two months. If the period of time to notify them that the contract would not be renewed can be extended in this document, the way it's written, or is that unlock a whole lot of other problems that are dependent upon that?
Commissioner, as in any contract situation, anything that meets the approval of both parties can be implemented virtually at any time, as long as it's well documented and clear as to the intent. So I think the commission's options are open as far as that sort of objective, or similar to last year, where to protect, so the city's position, you give the notice and still allow work to be performed in, in the interim before an ultimate decision is made. But, so I think it can be structured in whatever way the commission believes to be in the public's interest.
I want to have more confidence in handing this task to our staff to find an alternative to broadcasting our government meetings and implementing that before the end of the year than I do hearing Salina Media tell us that they're going to fix all the things we've been asking them to fix for years in the next 120 days.
You don't even have to go 120 days, you can go 90 days. It's, because I think if the issue of funding for them is not settled at the same time you do that, it creates a much bigger problem at the end of the year. As far as, you know, their budget and our city resources.
Decision may be dependent on what offerings the staff could give us and for alternatives, and then we have to balance those.
Because we researched the outside service, I believe, last year, the initial equipment uplay was $100,000, and the initial operating expenses were around 50. The figure of 150,000 the first year kind of stuck in my mind.
It was $100,000 in equipment and $50,000 annually after that.
Yeah. If, if we are, currently we're broadcasting on YouTube, we meet our Kansas Open Meetings Act requirement, or I'm not even sure we have to have a Kansas, I mean, under COVID, we really don't even have to.
It just has to be physically open to the public.
Physically open to the public, so.
Mayor Hoppick, in the interests of trying to thread a needle between all the different positions I've heard expressed, I am going to move that we extend the contract, act to extend the contract with the Salina Media Connection until June 30th of 2021. That's essentially a year from today. And that we use that time, number one, is it gives them time to continue addressing some of the issues we're talking about. And, and it also would include a direction to the staff to develop some pretty sound platforms as far as an RFP or an RFQ or whatever, however it is we decide to proceed, if we decide to proceed in that manner, with perhaps an update occurring sometime in January, so at that time we can make a, or maybe it has to be December in order to meet the six-month requirement for Salina Media Connection contract, to get an update on where things stand at that point, and then we can reconsider at that time.
Second?
Did I have a second?
I'm sorry, yeah.
I had a motion, a second, to extend the contract until June 21st of 2021.
Well, I think I said June 30th, essentially a year from today. But it'd be a year and a nine days or something, but yeah.
Just as clarification, that, that would mean we would be providing them notice of the intent to terminate the 2020, the automatic renewal, and then we'd come back to you with a, an agreement through June, end of June, that kind of fleshes out those details.
However that has to work. I'm going to look to the city attorney for that.
Just in terms of your vote, one key aspect would be, you know, to give me notice of intent to terminate, that would be part of this action, and we'd bring back a revised agreement.
And that would occur by December 31st of this year, to be, to meet the six-month ahead.
The current agreement is in effect till December 31st of this year, and provides that we need to provide notice if we don't intend to renew in 2021.
Six months.
So what we'd be doing is giving notice that we don't intend to renew as is in 2021, and we bring back a revised agreement through June of 2021, as Commissioner Franz described.
My whole purpose is to give us approximately a year from today to, to try to work through some of this stuff and get our, get our feet on the ground.
That was part of our problem last year. We felt like we were strapped for time to be able to, to address the issues. And, and I did want to say, this is no reflection on, on Deborah or Nancy that came up here. I think those are people I have a lot of respect for as far as the Salina Media Connection Board. I think this is a, it's something we've been dealing with before you, you were able to address, and it's, and it's more of a technical type issue, not programming. So I just wanted to put that out there, so. So I just wanted to put that out there, so. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes four to one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I petition for that five-minute break?
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back in here at 5:25.
Just, just two more items? No.
You're absolutely right.
Look. Yeah.